This meeting of Monroe Township Board of Education is now session. Can I ask them to please rise and join me in the pledge? Mrs. Kalaponowicz, you have a flag.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
... under God, who is the most and justice for all.
Thank you all. Mr. Porowski, we have a roll call.
Certainly, Mrs. Arminio.
I'm here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mrs. D'Amelio. Mrs. D'Amelio.
She's muted.
I'm here, sorry about that.
Mrs. Kalaponowicz.
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Here.
Mr. Plori.
I'm here.
Ryback. Mrs. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Tofano. Mr. Tofano.
Here.
Mr. Ratsky.
Here.
President, you have a quorum present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted June 5th, 2020 at all schools, the Home News Tribune, the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the Municipality.
Thank you very much, Mr. Porowski. First order of business for us is approving of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the June 10th, 2020 Monroe Township Board of Education, I'm sorry, the Public Board of Education meeting of April 27th.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Accusals? I need a motion to approve the closed session meeting of April 27th, 2020.
So moved.
Mr. President, I have a comment on that. The confidential meeting, I believe the confidential meeting refers to Vice President giving a report on negotiations, if I recall. Kathy was not involved in the negotiations portion of it, so it may be a typo or am I missing something? I think the Vice has to come out and I thought it was you who gave the presentation.
I did not.
That's what I thought. Just minor correction on the thing and other than that, yep.
Okay, good catch.
I'll make, thank you.
Okay, with the correction, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
One opposed, any of the tensions? Or accusations? Okay, motion to approve the special Board of Education meeting of May 7th, 2020.
So moved. All right.
I'll second that. Oh, did Rupa?
Okay. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions or accusations?
Mr. Board President, who seconded that motion? Was that Mrs. Kalaponowicz?
Kalaponowicz, yes. I need a motion now to approve the closed session meeting of May 7th, 2020.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Kalaponowicz seconded, all right. Any discussion on that?
Mrs. Michelle Arminio, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I have the closed session minutes in my possession and the, it says down here, redacted confidential draft. I don't see in mind where it's redacted. So how will I evaluate whether I think the redaction is acceptable or not?
Where do you have the redacted confidential draft?
On the agenda, it says redacted confidential draft.
I think you might have the public agenda.
That's what I was thinking.
You need the board member agenda, not the public agenda.
Well, this is what I was, this is what I was given.
I had that same thing, Michelle.
I do too.
The way, it's the way you accessed those documents.
What documents?
No, my point is, so I don't, so I don't see the redacted minutes. So I don't know what I'm, I mean, the ones that I see, I would have accepted, but I don't know what the public would be, would be getting. So I don't know what's redacted and if I agree with that or not. So I would, the minutes that I have in my hand that are unredacted, that are not redacted, I would approve, however, it says redacted and I don't see, where is the redacted version?
Mr. President, this is Andy Plori. Can we just table the motion to approve those meeting minutes at this point in time, please, and move on?
I have no problem.
Okay.
We'll table that.
Don't we need to make a motion to table it in a second?
I just did.
I'll second it.
Okay, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think that was 100%. So that, that was tabled. All right, now we can move on to presentations. Someone turn it over to Dr. Althick, I believe.
Thank you.
Mr. Thelman, can you make me the host so I can turn my screen, please?
Mr. President, could you please request the members of the board to put their computers on mute if they're not speaking, please?
That's a good idea. If you're not speaking, please put it on mute. Thank you, everybody.
You been able to see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so usually at our June meeting, we recognize our retirees. Anyone who has retired from our school district since last September through until, through this summer. And since we are in remote land, we're still going to do this too. So I do have this presentation. I have, I'm mentoring someone right now who's doing her hours for, to get her her superintendent certificate, her chief school administrator certificate, and she was able to put some of this information together for me, gathering information from the schools and the people that some, the people that these retirees work with. So we have 14 staff members who have retired through this past year. We're going to begin with Charlene Albright. Charlene taught in the Monroe Township School District for 27 years. She's a language arts teacher at the middle school. She also worked at Woodland School. And then transitioned to the, to the middle school, completed 22 years. She's been a sixth grade teacher, language advantage program teacher during all of her teaching career here. She's known for making learning fun and enjoyable in the most nurturing environments. Her positive and upbeat manner was recognized each and every school day. Outside of teaching, Ms. Albright is big into fitness and living a healthy lifestyle and even taught yoga to staff. She's certified in personal training and body sculpting, which she has been utilizing in New York sports clubs for the last 18 years as a teacher. Ms. Andrea Benevento, she's worked in the district for 25 years as a secretary. She started at Brookside School and then moved to the high school as the guidance secretary. She's then became the secretary to the assistant principals in the high school. At the high school, she's been a secretary for Mr. Griffin, Dr. Higgins, Dr. Sernansky, and Mr. Collins. She was recognized in 2011 as the high school's educational support professional of the year. She is the proud mother of two Monroe Township High School graduates, Stephanie and Amanda, and the proud grandmom to Emily. Bonnie Brenner has taught for 15 years, mainly at the Applegarth Middle School, which then became the Monroe Township Middle School. Besides teaching at the middle school, Ms. Brenner taught for one year at both Mill Lake School and Monroe Township High School. She's a supportive and caring special education teacher. She could always be counted on to teach in a variety of settings wherever she was needed, including resource rooms and ICR classrooms. Ms. Bonnie Casaleto, social studies and science supervisor. She had worked in Monroe for the past 13 and a half years and has many accomplishments for her departments. She implemented the next gen science standard throughout the district. She also created partnerships with the Princeton Plasma Physics Lab and the Waksman Institute of Rutgers. She is instrumental in implementing a civics program throughout our district and the many components of that. She has created connections with our township for recycling program. Arbor Day, the Historic Society, Day Farm, Henry Brickless Holocaust Memorial Essay, the American Legion Oracle Top, or Orturcal Competition, just to name a few. Bonnie's a wife, mom, and grandmom to six with three more babies on the way. And in retirement, she's enjoying her family, golf, and the beach. Mrs. Susan Green Dowcheck, she began her teaching career in New Brunswick and South Brunswick before permanently settling as a third grade teacher at Mill Lake School. Happiness and generosity are second to none. She has a passion for teaching that can be seen in how she ventures and challenges her students while providing them with the guidance to be successful. Every year, Susan and her husband Jim would work to donate hundreds of toys to the Mill Lake Toys for Kids fundraiser. It's a testament to who, who she is as an educator, that she not only thought about her own students, she considered the way she could help children in general. She is also one of our first cluster teachers at Mill Lake School. She worked to push her students to new heights and levels and was also sure to present this information at school faculty meetings. Above all, she has left a lasting impact on our district in Mill Lake in modeling how to have unconditional love and respect for students. And children, she will be missed and is immensely thanked for her years of service. Mr. Keith Hudak, teacher of social studies at the high school. He taught for 36 years, 33 of them have been in Monroe. He's coached for 38 years at four different schools, including Monroe. He's, he has been the head coach for softball and football at Monroe Township High School, as well as assistant coach for field hockey and women's basketball. Thank you for all of your work with our students. It's Aileen Kelly, teacher of physical education at the high school, had 40 years career as an educator, 31 of those at the high school. As a coach, she spent every one of her 40 years coaching at least one high school sport. For 11 of those 40 years, she was the head coach of two sports, field hockey and softball. Over the years, she's been a member of many committees affiliated with many educational associations, involved with FTEI as an officer, and was the advisor to numerous clubs. In 2007 and 2008, she was honored as the high school teacher of the year. But most importantly, she's known for being everything Irish. She's truly proud of her Irish heritage and is well-known for her presentation of Irish sofred during the St. Patrick's. Mr. Maggiapola, assistant principal at the high school. Right here is just a list of his accomplishments, but Mr. Maggiapola has been in our district for a very long time and really has provided a lot of mentorship to teachers, to administrators, and to students throughout his years here. He began as a science teacher 17 years and the department coordinator for three. He was the science club advisor and environmental action club advisor, weight training coach, ski club advisor, IAQ, which is indoor air quality coordinator, AVA coordinator, science league advisor. He was the 2005 Teacher of the Year, the 2008 Cornell Merrill Scholars Dist. Educator Award. He was a vice principal for 13 and a half years, the acting principal for a year and a half, MTSAA president for four years. He will truly be missed here in Monroe, in Monroe, and we wish him all the best in his retirement. Mr. Pawaski, teacher of industrial arts at the high school. He has 25 years of teaching experience at Franklin High School, Freehold Regional, and Monroe Township. He developed new classes for the engineering program with industrial arts within the programs of STEM engineering, civil engineering, and AutoCAD design. He was a certified instructor for Project Lead the Way Engineering Program, and over the years, he has coached varsity football and JV baseball. Mr. Dave Rapinski is a custodian at Mill Lake School and Woodland Schools, and in total had 36 and a half years of service in the Monroe Township School District. To former beloved head custodian Angelo, Mr. Rapinski was like a son. Keeping an elementary school clean, orderly, and safe for students and staff is no easy task. However, Mr. Rapinski always made this his top priority and went above and beyond on a daily basis. He was a constant and kind face to his colleagues at Mill Lake School, and it was an incredibly rare occasion to hear him say the word no. Always with a smile, walking the halls of Mill Lake, Mr. Rapinski modeled what it meant to be a part of a school community and to make sure every action bettered the school as a whole. Thank you for your incredible years of service, and we hope you are enjoying retirement fishing. This is Mary Schoners, middle school custodian. She's worked as a custodian for the, for the Board of Education for 23 years. She worked at Barclay Brook School, Brookside School, Central Office, the high school, and the middle school. She's always pleasant and friendly and could be counted on to help with whatever you might need. Her outside interests include anything biblical related, and she loves plants and trying new restaurants. A lot of staff at the middle school enjoy participating in all of her church practice. This is Robin Silverman, reading specialist at Mill Lake School. She began her teaching career in an early childhood setting in New York, and then she joined the Mill Lake staff in 1994. During her stay at Mill Lake, Robin has held positions as first grade teacher, second grade teacher, interim vice principal, and reading specialist. She's ending her career as the reading specialist, but it's important to consider that she worked with some of our students who struggled with early literacy. She never treated these students as lesser than, in fact, she built them up to feel empowered as learners. We can have professional development on reading, writing, math, and STEM, but there are some things that are innate and come natural. Mrs. Silverman's special skill is her natural and comforting way that she has with her students. When students walked into the Silverman's room, they felt at home and in kind. We saw so many students participate and defeat the odds through Mrs. Silverman's instructions. Hope you enjoy your retirement. Mrs. Silverman, we will miss you. This is Irena Stankwitz, she's the custodian at Brookside School, one of the night custodians at Brookside School since 2007. She's a valued member of our Brookside family. She showed a dedication to her job that was unparalleled. She went above and beyond the normal responsibilities of her job to not only ensure that classes were clean and ready for our students, but also to make sure that teachers have what they may need. She was a warm, friendly face at Brookside that many of us got to know so well. While we are happy for her venturing off into her retirement, we will surely miss her deeply. And Mr. Washington. So these, these quotes are from some of the people that he works with in his department. And we want to thank Mr. Washington for his 28 years of exceptional service to the Monroe Township community. Mr. Washington was the first member of the technology department in Monroe. When he first started, there were just a few computers and a handful of printers, mostly at the central office building. Today, he oversees thousands of devices, 8,000 users, and eight schools. He's led the district through the one-to-one iPad initiative at the high school, countless minor emergencies, and a few major ones along the way. He's a great leader, but an even better friend, and has that special quality of making everyone he comes in contact with feel important. The man, the myth, the legend, Reggie Washington is retiring. Now the fun begins. Congrats on extending your weekend within five days, with five days. I just want to congratulate all of these staff members. They have been truly family members in our district. We look at all of them as team members, and I would just like to thank them all for their service in Monroe, to all of the students and staff that we've had.
Thank you, Dr. . By count, I'd also like to second that with congratulations and thanking them for all the years of service to Monroe. Okay. With them, with, finished with that, we can now have committee reports. Have any committee chair that would like to report? Male?
Sure.
We had a curriculum committee meeting tonight. We reviewed six documents, Unified Physical Education, AP Calculus AB, Geometry, Chorus Grade 7, 8, Chorus Grade 6, Instrumental Music Grade 6, and three textbook adoptions, Computer Programming, Chemistry, and Honors Chemistry. The Curriculum for Physical Education, Falcon PALS. Currently, our unified programs at the Monroe Township High School are innovative, rewarding, and productive for all our students involved. Our Unified Physical Education program is a Special Olympics, New Jersey Unified Championship school model. As our population of students with intellectual disabilities increase, there is a very discernible need for programs that truly integrate students with their neurotypical peers. Monroe Township has developed groundbreaking unified programs that step outside of the definition of inclusion. Falcon PALS also is an acronym for Peer-Assisted Leadership Skills. Unified Physical Education is a consortium of students with and without intellectual disabilities that engage in a course designed to create an atmosphere of social acceptance while engaging in physical skill sets. Students learn the importance of teamwork, sportsmanship, rule application, and strategy as it pertains to participation in physical games and activities, as well as integrating SEL, life skills, and basic health concepts. Monroe Township High School has implemented unified programs based on the premise that students should learn together. All students should be actively engaged in courses where everyone is involved in getting a meaningful lesson. AP Calculus AB, this is a college calc one level course. As per the College Board Course Overview, AP Calculus is designed to be a course equivalent to the college-level calc one. Students will gain an understanding of differential and integral calculus with an understanding of the connection of average and instantaneous change, as well as area between a curve and the axis. The intent of the course is for students to gain an understanding of each concept graphically, numerically, and analytically with an application to real-life scenarios. Students will be able to build arguments and justify conclusions throughout concepts such as limits, change, and function analysis. The next one is geometry. Geometry begins in grade 10, and it is the second course in the traditional college preparatory sequence. The course is designed to stimulate and develop clear, logical, creative thinking through the study of the basic structure of geometry, geometric relationships, and formal deductive proofs. Some topics included are points, lines, planes, segments, angles, parallel and perpendicular lines, congruent and similar triangles, polygons, proportions, right angles, circles, constructions, perimeter area, and volume. In addition, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards has added a greater emphasis on proofs, as well as an introduction to ellipses, horizontal parable, parable, parables, and hyperbolas. The next one is the grade six curriculum document. The sixth grade cor, I'm sorry, excuse me, sixth grade chorus. The sixth grade chorus is a concept and performance-based elective at the Monroe Township Middle School. The course is a non-auditioned ensemble and is not necessary for students to have choral experience prior to enrolling. The Monroe Township Middle School Sixth Grade Chorus has singers performing in two and three-part treble choral repertoire. This course emphasizes vocal technique, knowledge of music theory, sight-singing practices, literacy through repertoire and choral ensemble singing. A broad spectrum, excuse me, a broad spectrum of musical literature is studied and performed throughout the school year in various meters, languages, musical, musical styles. Students in the ensemble perform by grade level and occasionally with a larger seventh and eighth grade combined chorus. Students are encouraged to audition and participate in co-curricular choral activities. Students will also have the opportunity to audition for select choirs as a result of audition skills and as a result, audition skills and preparation will be a focus for this ensemble. Enrolled students must accept the commitments as presented in the performance calendar as a condition of participation in the course. We also reviewed the chorus for grades seven and eight. Seven, eight grade chorus is a non-auditioned ensemble. It is not necessary for students to have choir experience before taking this course. The group has singers populating the sopranos, alto, baritone, and cambiata vocal parts. The course stresses vocal technique, music theory knowledge, sight-singing, literacy through repertoire and choral ensemble singing. A broad spectrum of musical literature is studied and performed throughout the year in various meters, languages, and musical styles. Students in the ensemble will perform by grade level, as well as larger seventh, eighth grade combined chorus. Students are encouraged to audition and participate in regional, state, and national choirs. Since students will also have the opportunity to audition select choirs that meet after school, audition skills and preparation will be a focus for this ensemble. Students must accept the commitments presented in the performance calendar as a condition, condition of participation in the chorus. The next one is the instrumental music grade six. The sixth grade instrumental music program is a concept and performance-based pull-out elective. The sixth grade bands are non-auditioned ensembles. There is no prerequisite requirements for this course. However, successful completion of fifth grade band is helpful. Pull-out lessons are arranged by instrument family to provide a more personalized, intimate approach, therefore paving an excellent pathway to proficiency. Topics addressed will include essential musical concepts such as scales, sight-reading, tune-in, tone quality development, ensemble development, techniques that allow students to improve listening, blending, and balance skills while playing with others, and chamber music opportunities to strengthen musical independence. We've also had three textbook adoptions. We've had computer, they are computer programming, chemistry, and honors chemistry. Computer programming. This course emphasizes problem-solving, design skills, and program analysis and testing. Students will solve problems in mathematics, science, business, and other areas. Hands-on use of the computer is emphasized. This course is designed for novice learners to begin the basic study of computer programming using the Visual Basic Language. The text, Starting Out with Visual Basic, 8th Edition, copyright 2020, is the text that has been identified to best meet the needs of students in computer programming. Rich in concise, practical examples, Starting Out with Visual Basic covers the tools and features of Visual Basic and when and how to use them. The authors introduce the fundamentals of Visual Basic in a clear, too easy-to-understand language, making it accessible to the novice programming students. Students not only learn how to use the various controls, constructs, and features of Visual Basic, but also why and when to use them. The eighth edition includes updates for compatibility with Visual Studio of 2017. The next was Chemistry and Honors Chemistry. The Honors Chemistry book that was chosen was, is Introductory Chemistry: A Foundation by the author Zemdal. The textbook comes with the OWL online system that allows students to meet curricular goals set forth by the Honors Chemistry Curriculum. The OWL guides students in their learning. Students will also be able to interact with the knowledge in unique formats for the online platform for learning that is available. The text allows for problem-solving structure that enables students to become strong, critical thinkers in the sciences. Additionally included are study tools that help students with conceptual understanding and resources for practice and review. Math review is also provided for particularly challenging mathematical concepts. Our AP Chemistry program also uses a book by the author Zemdal, so the students wishing to move forward in chemistry will gain the key foundational skills that are necessary. The textbook selected for our chemistry class is Chemistry by Savas, which was formerly Pearson. Chemistry is very well-aligned to current standards and curricula for our chemistry course. Authentic science experiences are embodied with the, embodied with the, embedded with the, within the text along with STEM activities. The text is also aligned to the next-generation science standards. The platform utilized with this, within this program offers much flexibility to the teachers to create customized lessons as well as assessments. Given the math component that is a natural part of chemistry, this text also provides problem and math support to students through math tune-up pages, as well as online problem set. STEM activities are also built into the program to promote higher-order critical thinking skills, and that's it.
Any other committee chair?
Mr. Ryback, it's Rupa. I have one for a policy committee.
Yes, thank you. I can't see everybody, so I'm glad you called out, okay?
No problem. So the policy committee met on June 3rd, and we discussed, just discussed one item, a code of conduct for remote meetings for board members, which was provided by school boards. And Mr. Ryback had also shared a copy with me. I had attended a school board's virtual web session on policy on May 20th, and this code of conduct was discussed in great length. School district, school districts are encouraged to adopt this code of conduct since our meetings are in a virtual environment. This is something that was discussed on that policy web session. Code of conduct could be adjusted to fit the needs of the school district. I just want to share some of the highlights of what's in this code of, code of conduct, and these were also some discussion items during that web session. And I had also shared this with the policy committee last week. So first item that they discussed was, you know, this is a new environment for us all, and we want to continue to uphold trust, keep everyone focused and competent. They talked about continuing to be professional. Don't use backgrounds in your meetings. Dress and speak in a professional manner. Be in a quiet location where there are no distractions while you're in the meeting. Speakers should raise their hands or request to speak, identify, or announce themselves. It was also reiterated that board members are still held to board member ethics in the remote environment. Nothing is supposed to be shared with anyone while in closed session. And there was also some discussion on And there was also some discussion on cellphone usage, and this is something that can be added to the code of conduct. As an in-person meeting, cellphones are silenced or turned, turned off. And if there's an emergency, you're supposed to let board president, the board president know. So, the code of conduct was updated to include that one piece regarding cellphone usage. We followed the template that school board had provided us, and a copy of the code of conduct for remote meetings is on the agenda this evening. The policy committee has reviewed this document and has agreed to make a motion tonight to the full board to adopt the code of conduct for remote meetings. And if approved, we can sign off on them and then include them with our standard board member code of conduct that we sign off on each year in our January reorg meeting. So, I'm going to read the, the motion right now. Is that okay to do at this point?
I think it's, it's in the agenda. I think for, am I right? Maybe Mr. Gorski, do we have it in the agenda? I think I saw it in the agenda.
It's, it's in the agenda, um, in board action under the superintendent's report.
We'll be voting on it then.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we don't need to do a motion right now?
You can do a motion now if you want. Just, we'll just have to, uh, delete it later on.
Okay, I don't need to if it's fine in the agenda. I'm good.
Okay.
And then I had one other item I just wanted to update the board on is that the education pieces that we've been doing, we're going to take a little break for the summer, and we're going to restart the education pieces in August or September. So, I just want to make sure the board knew that as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Plory.
Andy Plory. Good evening, everybody, and good evening to the public and to my fellow board members. I just took a list of all the teachers and staff that's retiring from Monroe Township today, and I see that at least seven or eight of them have put in 25 years plus into Monroe Township. And on behalf of the board, and especially from me, I want to thank everybody and wish them a happy retirement. In terms of the Education Advocacy Committee meeting, we actually held a meeting on June 3rd. There were three items that were discussed. I'll go through those very quickly. The first one is an update on the, on the bill. I can give you the bill numbers. It's Senate Number 2392 and the Assembly Number 3969. Both of those actually went through the Assembly and through the Senate, and we contemplated on actually writing letters, but because the, the bill's already passed through the legislation, there was no point in wasting our time doing that. And also, these bills have been signed into law by Governor Murphy. What these bills essentially do is to give the municipalities an avenue to delay payments to the school districts. As you know, we get about 86% of our, our budget from, from the, from Monroe Township. So, if the township chooses to exercise that bill, the law that's being executed, water that's put in, it would have some serious consequences to make sure that, you know, we continue to pay our teachers and staff and continue to do the operations we're doing. So, having said that, I, I still, I'm glad that Dr. Alwick sent a very strong letter to the, to the, to the legislation. At least our voice is heard. During the meeting, it was suggested by the, the committee members to have Mr. Gorski go back and check with the Monroe Township officials to see if they anticipated any kind of a delay in payments, especially now the fact that this bill has passed. So, I, I think, Mike, you have done that. Do you want to just give a quick update on what you learned?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Plory. As per the directive of the Educational Advocacy Committee, I called the township business officials to inquire if there has been any changes to the township's ability to pay the full tax payment schedule to the Board of Education, especially now that, as you mentioned, the legislative body has given them the ability to do so. Mr. Weinberg informed me that the most recent quarterly tax collections recognized by the township were 95.5%, down from 98% pre-COVID-19. In his opinion, there is no significant deterioration of tax revenues recognized by the municipal government as of now. Therefore, according to Mr. Weinberg, the municipality does not foresee any reduction, delay, or deferral of the school district tax payment schedule as approved. And as a postscript to that, Mr. Plory, we received our final payment in the 1920 school year, which was June's payment today of $7,261,609. So, that concludes all payments to us that were owed for the 1920 school year.
Well, thank you very much, Mike. As you know, my concern doesn't end with the school year with the 2019, 2020. We got to be cognizant. Once we start the 2020, 21 budget also, we continue to get the payments the way you're getting. There's another bill that we, we've been tracking in the Senate for 2475, and basically this bill gives provisions to the municipal entities, whether it's the municipality or a school district or what have you, to be able to bond at a really low rate. In, in asking questions from the committee members, Mr. Gorski replied that there's no need for having, going and issuing any bonds at this point because, you know, we do expect the, the funds to come in from the township as, as anticipated. So, that's, that's a relief because we don't want to burden the taxpayers anymore than we already have. The last item I have is the revised state allocations. As you all know, that there was a $335 million, if I remember correctly, that was slashed from the overall state aid to all the school districts, and it was proportionally, don't ask me the definition of proportionality, but it goes into the black hole of the school funding formula, and then they distribute the cuts to everybody. Just to refresh everybody's memories, and we were getting about a million dollars more than what we received in state aid last year. With the cuts, unfortunately, we, it resulted in almost $693,723 cut from that. So, that only gives us an increase of $323,147 about the last year's. So, it's, it's a disappointment, but I guess, you know, everybody's feeling the pinch of the current situation we have with COVID. And we were glad to hear that our, our administrator and, and the superintendent are actually looking at where the cut should come from. I don't want to steal Paul Rutske's thunder. Maybe he'll get into it, but I think we have a very responsible budget that we're going to be passing, modifying, hopefully, today. So, that concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Plory, I just want to say that I, you know, I mentioned, I'm, I've written a letter sort of addressing some of the things that you've mentioned, and I'll leave that for board approval during my report later on.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Steve.
Okay, any other committee chair?
Steve, it's Paul.
Go ahead, Paul.
Since Andy, Andy gave me that, that sort of segue, I figure I'll take it from here. Thank you, Andy. I'll jump to the state aid reduction because that's where Andy left off. And we did have our finance meeting Wednesday the 3rd at 7:00 PM. And yes, we had to come up with some options of how to pull roughly $700,000 out of the budget for 2021 to compensate for the reduction in state aid. So, Dr. Alwick, Dr. Lehman, and Mr. Gorski had been already preparing for what could have been anywhere from a 5% to a 15% reduction in the aid. And the, the cut kind of came in right around the middle, so we were, I'm going to say, prepared to have this discussion, and so... Therefore, the recommendations came down to, and I'm going to use the word defer as opposed to just eliminate because the, the, the thought is that these things are going to be deferred into the following year's budget because these are the things we needed. We're just going to do without them for one more year. So, the, the first was roughly $100,000 to defer the referendum and all the costs associated with going out to the town for a vote. We'll put that off till after June 30th of 2021, and then we'll see where things stand. So, that's $100,000. The proposed new trailer lease for the back of the high school for the four trailers, we are working to, again, it's, there's a gray area of, you know, contractually, are we deferring it for next year, or are we just going to try to cancel the contract and, and, and then look to revisit this conversation in a year? That's roughly $500,000. And then, in the area of-
Special education?
Yeah, especially some new teachers that we were looking at, some new instructors. We were looking at adding into the mix was an additional behavioral specialist, an additional transition specialist. So, we've pulled that from the budget as well, approximately $110,000. Not that we're pulling from the special needs budget, we're just not going to add these two extra teachers and specialists. And while that's a difficult decision, of course, we felt amongst the administration and the staff that, that these were two that we could, we could comfortably put off for, for a year when you have to make tough decisions. So, all in total, that's about $710,000 of cuts without really affecting any actual programs or curriculum classes. And that covers the $693,000 reduction in state aid. So, after some Q and A discussed, Dr. Alwick, we provided the questions, Dr. Alwick provided the answers. The committee did close out the session, ready to recommend these eliminations slash deferrals at tonight's meeting. So, that was the state aid part. If I may just go to the exciting, anybody have a question on state aid? Is that what I'm hearing?
Mr. Rutske, this is Andy. I think we also discussed in the same way about the, the need for the, the district to continue to pay some of the services irrespective of whether we're, we're receiving them or not, such as the school buses and, and the drivers' union and things like that. I think some of your committee members raised that as a question to see if we could defer that because of the situation, but-
Well, we, we did, yes, and that's, I would say for next year's budget, that's a little bit of a gray area because while we were committed to doing that for 2019, 2020 budget and with the agreement with the state to fully pay everybody that was already budgeted for through year-end, whether it's the police not being in the schools, whether it's the coaches not coaching sports, everybody got paid for this school year. So, for, for September, with a lot of unknowns with regards to remote learning or in-person learning, it's also unknown if we have to contractually pay some of these ancillary outside positions. Does that sound about right, Andy? Okay. All right. And, and, and that's going to be sort of fluid as time goes by. We'll learn more. And obviously, our administration will be working very closely with the state on what legally we have to do and then what we as a district want to do.
Well, I'm going to be addressing this also later on, but yes, the legal ramifications there of having to pay, for example, contracted transportation buses. We're not having, you know, if we're doing virtual instruction. So, those are some of the issues we have to take up with legislators also.
Agree, agree. And, and that's why I say the situation is fluid because I, I, I don't think we really know what's going to be in September. And I'm sure I'll leave that conversation for further into the meeting with Dr. Alwick. If we're good with that, I'll go on to school lunches because who doesn't like a good lunch? Mr. Gorski went over with the committee with regards to information from Nancy Mitrosak, the food service director, that our school lunch participation when we were in school was running at an all-time high. What's referred to as a type A lunch is your full-service lunch that we offer. We are, on average, I'll give you some stats here, the lowest in the county. For the elementary schools, we're 47 cents below average. For the middle school, we're 62 cents below average, and for the high school, we're 79 cents below average for these type A lunches. So, while we're charging and our prices are $230, $235, and $240, respectively, at the high school, at 79 cents, which doesn't sound like a heck of a lot, but over the course of 180 days, that's $142 for each student and their family to not spend on the cost of school, the cost of their lunches. So, maybe they buy some extra food, or they do whatever they do, but I'm just saying it's a great service that Monroe is providing with our food service out to the students. One of the things that helps facilitate those low prices is the federal food commodities that we do get. It directly reduces our food costs by about $125,000 per school year. So, that's a big number, and that's one of the main points that allows us to keep our lunch prices at the lowest in the county. With that said, we are recommending, it was recommended to the committee, from Mr. Gorski and Mr. Mitrosak, to a 2% management fee to Metz, a 2% management fee increase to Metz Culinary Management. So, contractually, they are allowed to ask for an increase which lines up with CPI, core price inflation, which is about 3% right now, but the administration feels comfortable that we could recommend a 2% increase and that they'll, they'll accept that. So, that's what we're prepared to do. That concludes my finance report.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hold on, Michelle's got a question.
Okay.
Take yourself off mute.
I'm doing it. I'm doing it. Okay. So, in that regard, in, in our, on the agenda tonight is the contract renewal for, and, you know, the finance committee was recommending the Food Service Management Company. But dear, I, I would like an explanation for the public about the, the numbers. In the middle of the recommendation, it says, "The proposal for Food Service Management Program includes a management fee in the amount of $72,800 and guarantees a financial return of $61,056.18 for the 2021 school year." However, I think we discussed, so I would like clarification for the public. I think we discussed that we don't actually collect with $61,000. It says financial return. If that could be explained because, as I understood it in the committee, that, that we are zeroed out even with that return. So-
I believe it doesn't really make its way into the budget, but we did have that conversation, and I'm glad the numbers are out there. Mike, Gorski, you, you prepared to discuss that a little deeper?
Yes, thanks.
Awesome. Thank you.
Metz Culinary Management, for everybody's understanding, employs all of the cafeteria workers with the exception of Nancy Mitrosak, who is a district employee as the food service director. And as part of those management operation that Metz Culinary Management engages in, they have training for their staff expenses. They have other expenses that rise with CPI. And that's why the state-issued contract for these management companies allows the management fee to float with CPI. And as Mr. Rutske said, that's 3%. So, Mrs. Mitrosak and I negotiated it down to 2. Mrs. Mitrosak feels that this company is outperforming in many areas, especially HR and HR management, and she feels it's fair to recommend a 2% increase. Specific to Mrs. Arminio's question, the management fee annually is approximately $70,000. That's what they're paid to run the food service operation, hire the staff, buy the food, and cook the lunches. From that, they guarantee in their contract a pre-depreciation profit of $61,056. They've exceeded that every year that we've been with them. And once you add depreciation charges, as designed, the food service operation breaks even. And by that, I mean it may have a profit or a loss in the range of $10,000 to $20,000 a year. It's not designed to have a retained earnings accumulation in that fund like Falcon Care and ECE. The state of New Jersey and the New Jersey Child Nutrition Department reimburse us for lunches, and if we're accumulating retained earnings or too much cash, they feel your lunch prices are too high, believe it or not, and they will, they will tell you to reduce them, or they will take back some of their subsidies. So, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Mr. Rutske. Mr. Plory, you head up?
Yeah, for, for a non-financial person to understand what you guys just said, in terms of the cost of lunch comparable to the rest of the districts around Monroe Township, where do we stand? How compatible are we?
What would you put, I'm sorry. Did you ask about our comparison to the rest of the county?
Yes.
On what, lunch prices or on the whole profit and loss?
On the lunch prices.
All right, so that's where we are. Let's see if there's a percentage in here. I don't see a percentage per se, but- let's put it this way, if we're 79 cents below the average at the high school, and we're charging $240- the average at the high school and we're charging 240, the average is then 319. So that's about a 25% reduction, lower than everybody else in the county.
Well, our prices for lunch are lowest, I believe, in Middlesex County.
Lowest in the county and about 25% below average. I hope that helps.
In other words, as a parent, what what would be the cost that one has to put up with in addition to anything? Is there a cost?
I feel like I'm having deja vu. $142 a year is what the average high school student is saving in Monroe versus the average Middlesex County lunch at a high school for type A.
Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
If I remember correctly, the last time we raised the lunch price was not because we needed to, it was because the state required.
They forced us to, yeah, a year or two ago. They forced us to raise them by like a dime.
Yeah.
This year, we're not forced to raise them. We're holding steady.
Okay. Thank you.
Board members, if you have a question, please go through me so that we avoid any overlap or uh, you know, three people calling out at the same time. I'll recognize you. You just call out, and if I can't see you, I'll recognize you. Anyone else have a question for Mr. Rutske?
If I may, I would just like to offer my highest compliment to Nancy Mitrosak, our food service director, for her daily management and operation oversight of this program. She is on top of the vendor as far as making sure all the rebates come back to the district. And um, she is the envy of every other school district as far as the performance of the food service director. You may recall a couple of years ago, the USDA came here to highlight and showcase some of our operations. And um, you know, uh, as I, as I mentioned before, that's that's solely because of the vision and excitement that Nancy Mitrosak brings to her job.
Thank you. Any other committee chair?
Michelle Arminio?
Michelle, go ahead.
Okay. I don't know if this is for Mr. Gorski's report or since I have it in the package, uh, we have a uh, tax payment schedule. Uh, I just want to confirm that is that this is the, and it, at the bottom, it's 118 million plus, oh, I'm sorry, 118,000. Uh, it says to total district tax. Could that be explained? Oh, no, it isn't. Well, I'm sorry, it is 118 million. I thought it was um, uh, definitely at the end.
Mr. Ryback, would you like to talk about that now or we, when we get to the BA report?
No, I ran the way to the BA report because I was wondering where that question was coming from. That's okay.
No, it's in the packet. My packet is sort of all over the place right now. And I just wanted to, since we were talking about taxes and the municipality, I just wanted to make sure that this was our scheduled tax payment from the municipality.
We'll deal with it later. Any other, no problem. Any other committee chair? Okay. In that case, we can move on to the public forum. Let me explain this public.
Mr. President, this is Andy Pelori. I apologize to interrupt, but I thought we had a building renovation committee.
I didn't hear anybody, Mr. Tufano?
Is there no report?
Mr. Tufano, are you, I can't see you. Are you going to report BGNT Committee?
I have a report this time.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you, Pete.
This time.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll have to make up for that one. Um, all right, we can move to the public forum. Uh, when you come up, members of the public, please note that this is, your questions or statements are for the agenda items only. I'll ask that you state your name and address. You have four minutes uh, to present. Mr. Feldman, do we have anyone there from the public?
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. President, we do. Um, let me take a look here. Um, Pradeep Malam of the board would like to speak. Um, Pradeep, if you could just uh, please, please state your name and address for the record, and if you could lower your hand when you're done speaking, it would be appreciated. Thank you very much.
Pradeep, go ahead.
Uh, yes. So I have a couple of questions. The first question is regarding the um, the last email we received from Dr. Alvik regarding the ceremonies for 2020 seniors, the class of 2020. Um, I, what I heard from, uh, what I, what I read from the email is like, they are still planning to do a ceremony at Arena. Is that DNS or no?
Can I ask, was this on the agenda?
No.
No, Pradeep, you have to wait for the next public forum for this, please. Let me ask.
I have another, I have another question. I have another question on the agenda item, please.
Well, then, let's, you know, make sure you stick to the agenda. Okay.
Okay. I see, uh, I see a Rosetta Stone uh, payment from the BS report.
I couldn't.
Is it in today's agenda in, from BA report?
Uh, could, could you say that again? I couldn't make out what you said. I'm sorry.
Okay. From BS report, there is a bill that that is pending approval from the board to buy Rosetta Stone, the language software that is being used in those schools.
All right. You want an explanation of that? Dr. Alvik, you want?
I have a, no, I, let, let me finish my question, please. So.
Okay.
In that, in that bill, I see that we are buying for three years upfront. So in this dire situation, why do we need to buy three years upfront? Why can't we buy only one year? That is one question. And I see that invoice that is for English, US, and Spanish, French, and German. But I, I skimmed through middle school and high school curriculums. I don't see that we are offering any German. If we knock off German, we might save some money on that particular bill. And on top of that, the same Rosetta Stone, we have some licenses through our library. So did anybody explore the option that can we, can we consolidate these license costs along with the library licenses or use that one? And the other question is, why don't we explore some other new age software? Rosetta Stone is very old. I respect for their uh, software, but there are so many new things that came up like Mango Languages, Babbel for Business, Duolingo, there are so many other uh, new age software and new techniques that came in to enrich our languages. So did anybody, did any research or comparison? If it is too late to do that, let's buy for one year. I request you to consider this and let's buy for one year and do the research the whole next year. By the time we need to buy the next time, we will have some more information on this one.
Are you finished with the questions?
Yes, I am done with my questions.
Dr. Alvik, do you want to?
Sure. Yes. So Rosetta Stone is a program that we use with our third through fifth graders for our beginning language acquisition. It is used in conjunction with a, a Spanish teacher that also works with each of the classes. Um, so the students are kind of getting, getting it to different ways. Our supervisor does take a look at what is offered. The Rosetta Stone actually works best for our students because the teacher, teacher, the classroom teacher and the Spanish teacher are able to track student progress um, with this specific um, license. Um, I do not know why it's a three-year license versus a one-year license. Usually that's because we get a better deal when we get, when we do a multi-year year. Um, I'm not sure if that's exactly, exactly that for this one, but usually that's why we do a multi-year license. Um, working with the public library, we wouldn't be able to get enough licenses for all of our third through fifth grade students um, through the public library. Um, and Dr. Rozell, who is the supervisor of world language, works very closely and is actually on the board with the public library of the public library. So she works very closely with them. So I'm sure that she has um, explored that option with, with the public library.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Alvik, if I may add on to that, the three-year agreement was significantly discounted as opposed to a one-year deal. We still have to have it board-approved every single year, but by signing a three-year, we get a significant reduction in price.
That's what I think.
Thank you. Yeah, that made sense also, Mr. Gorski. Okay, uh, who's next, Mr. Feldman?
Mr. Board President, Prakash Parab would like to speak. Prakash, if you could just state your name and address for the record, and if you could lower your hand when you're done, that would be appreciated. Gash?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Prakash Parab, 33 Diner Drive. President Steve, I have uh, three things to talk about.
Go ahead, Prakash.
Yeah. Uh, first of all, congratulations to all the retirees. Thanks for your devotion towards the children. So we really salute y'all. And special thanks to Scott Metropella for bringing STEM programs to the school and leading the school as the acting principal. So we salute you. We salute everyone, but we salute also Scott Metropella for the special STEM programs. Uh, the second thing is um, the May, uh, in, in Mr. Gorski's report, uh, item C, I see May expenditures of, again, 11 million dollars. And from March 21st, the school has been closed. I know that you all are contractually paying for, payment for the salaries and all that, but naturally, when the school is closed, there are several variables uh, for which we are not paying the cost. So uh, what are the savings? If not, why? That is the question. And uh, that is second question. Then the third one is, uh, I appreciate Governor and Mrs. Governor for implementing climate changes as an education inclusion. That's a good news. But I'm hearing also, there are some changes in the sex, sex education curriculum. So what we would like to know as a public is what sex education changes, if they are coming. Uh, and uh, if they are, uh, question is, if the state implements those curriculum on us, are we forced to adopt them actually as they are or it is left to the community, uh, and our Board of Education and our district to see what is the best interest for our students? So those are the three things. Two, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gorski, you'll take that?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ryback. Regarding the savings that uh, it, it seems to be a um, a question that keeps coming up uh, from different areas. We've addressed this before, but I did have the chance to work with staff and put together some detailed information for your understanding. And as I stated before, by having schools closed, legislation from the state requires us to pay all full-time wages, all emollients with the wages, including benefits and and things like that, all contracted services for transportation, even though the buses aren't running, all private school tuition, even though uh, most of it's not being performed. So some of the largest areas of savings come in the following areas, and I'll be brief. Substitute pay strictly from the closure of schools has saved 177,770 dollars. Savings in fuel from transportation is approximately 77,000 dollars. Decrease in athletic trips saves 40,698 dollars. Savings in graduation venue and transportation to graduation, assuming that we're not having it at Sunbank Arena or Cure Bank, whatever it's called now, saves 16,192. Savings from Aiden Lou payments, which is negotiable, saves 82,000 dollars. And we worked with Energy for America to do a detailed account of savings from energy in our schools since we've been closed based on kilowatt per hour and so on. And that comes to 340,000 dollars from energy. However, we are losing 504,620 dollars from Falcon Care profit. So when you, and that Falcon Care ECE profit was always transferred to the general fund, so that must be included. When you net all these together, the losses from Falcon Care and ECE of 504,620 and all of the other savings and expenses that I mentioned just now, the net decrease in expenses is 229,040 on a 130 million dollar budget. I hope this puts this issue to rest because there, as I said from the beginning, there are no material savings from closing schools.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Ryback, I can answer the second part of that question.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Feldman.
Anytime that standards are revised by the state, we are obligated to implement them within our schools. However, they don't tell us how to implement them. They just give us the standards and then it's up to the individual districts to write curriculum um, and adopt curriculum. Um, usually when they update standards, they, there's a timeline of when the standards are required to be implemented. Um, I know for next year, we're actually required to implement new science standard for next year, not this September, for the following September. New science standards, new visual and performing arts standards, new world language standards, new career readiness standards, and new life readiness standards. However, we are aware of the timeframe when these standards are coming out from the state. We, as, as a supervisory team under Dr. Lehman and all the supervisors, work that if they know the standards are coming out, we plan for when we're going to write the curriculum to incorporate the new standards. So yes, we are required to implement the standards that the state sets, but it's done through the curriculum writing process and all curriculum is approved by the board.
Thank you. Uh, okay. Uh, Mr. Feldman, do we have anyone else?
We, the Board President, Betty Saberito, if you could just state your name and your address for the record, and if you could kindly lower your hand when you're done speaking, it would be appreciated. Betty?
Hi. Good evening. Betty Saberito, to Barrymore Drive. Uh, I am the leader of CPAG, which is the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, and I have some questions and concerns on behalf of our group with regard to the budget. The first one is, um, Mr. Rutske, I understand you said you're not taking away from special ed when you're making the cuts for the two positions that clearly we need. We have a bigger concern because the transition specialist, that program is growing very largely. So um, that was absolutely needed. And a bigger concern is with the behaviorists because a lot of these students now, not a lot, all of them, are going to be out of school by the time we return approximately six months because we're doing, which is extended school year remote. So I don't, I'm assuming that the district did take this into consideration, but we're going to return with a lot of behaviors. And currently, what we have on staff, I've said this repeatedly, simply isn't enough because our behaviorists do not only deal with special education students, general education students have behaviors as well. So we're very concerned about that. Our second question with regard to the budget is, we're trying to save everywhere, but we do see, um, I think Mr. Gorski just said that we are obligated to um, contractually pay our full-time employees, but we're currently paying a lot of part-time employees. And for ESY, we see that we're contracting um, quite a lot of uh, paraprofessionals, which I understand we need some for the teacher support. I'm not sure if we need all of them being that we are going to be remote. And the second part of that question is, on some of these paraprofessionals on the agenda, we also see that there's that additional toileting um, amount that we pay for the students that need that assistance in the classroom. Again, it's remote, so why are we paying this additional amount to powers that are going to be working remotely? That's all my questions.
Dr. Alvik, do you want to respond to some of that?
Sure. Yeah. Um, we, we agree. None of these budget cuts were an easy decision. Um, we, we had to look, we didn't want to take anything that was currently in our, our, our students have in, in the budget. So we looked at new appropriations. We worked closely with Mrs. Ruella before making these final decisions. So I, I hear, I hear the concern, um, and we will continue to monitor that situation as we return to school in the fall. Um, with regard to the um, paras and the toileting, it's a contractual obligation. So it's part of, I, we're seeing our full-time employees, it's not necessarily full-time employees, it's our permanent employees. We must pay all of our permanent employees, which includes full-time and part-time employees. Um, so even though we're going remote, we're still contractually obligated to provide uh, for those employees.
I just want to add, you know, these, these decisions are not easy, and that's what we're here for. And uh, we tried to, to make, you know, the least negative impact as, as possible. But again, these were very difficult decisions that, that we had to make, and hopefully things will improve i- in the future. Mr. Gorski, did you want to touch on any, any of this, or are we good?
I believe we're good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Saberino. Um, Ms. Feldman, we have anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Board President, Ms. Chrissy Skirby, um, would you like, would like to speak? Ms. Skirby, can you uh, please state your name and address for the record? And just remember to uh, just kindly put your hand down when you're done, Ms. Skirby.
Uh, yes. Hi. Good evening. Uh, Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. Um, I noticed under the superintendent's um, board action that there is the contract um, to renew the board attorney for about 193,000 dollars. And then under the business administrator's action items, there's also a line item to hire a separate law firm. Can somebody please clarify? Can somebody please clarify that for me?
Well, there was a question as far as the separate law firm. There was a question that came up, and then we felt that to be fair, we'd need to hire an outside law firm. Dr. Alvin, did you want to add anything to that?
No.
Okay.
So that was backdated to May first, so it wasn't part of the May agenda. And I believe it goes through the end of the year, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that was just for one question that you had, that you couldn't have our board attorney?
Something that had to be looked into, and that's the way the contract was.
So for one item, we're paying through the end of the, we have to have a contract for the end of the year? Hmm. That's interesting.
Yeah, it was, it was. Had to be. Okay.
And just another question. It was just mentioned that we're saving sixteen thousand dollars on the high school graduation. Is that money going to be allocated then to do something for the class of 2020? I know a lot of school districts are, you know, doing various activities. And I just, I don't see what our district is doing in terms of following what some of the other districts are doing. You know, it's putting banners up throughout the town. I know that Hamilton has changed their venue from the Cure Arena to the Trenton Thunder Arena, so they have a larger location to hold it. I'm just wondering what we're going to be doing with the savings of the graduation money for the class of 2020.
Dr. Alvin, I'd like to answer, but I'll just like to comment and say that, you know, every district has to do what they have to do to try and give their kids the best possible end-of-year experience. We're doing all that we can do. You know, you can only, every time you look at somebody else, they may have something that they're doing that we're not doing. They may be looking at us and saying, gee, we're not doing that. So it's very hard to compare. I just think that I appreciate, speaking for myself now, all that our administration and teachers and principals are doing to give our kids the best end-of-year experience. Dr. Alvin, do you want to add to that?
I was going to share during my report about our plans for graduation. Do you want me to do it then, or would you like me to do it now?
Why don't you do it then?
Then, okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Skirby. Anyone else?
At this time, Mr. Board President, there is no one else in the public.
Okay, good. In that case, we can move on to the superintendent, assistant superintendent's report. Dr. Feldman?
It's Dr. Lehman.
Lehman.
I just wanted to get a quick update on, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to give a quick update on some things.
They pulled you into promotion there, again. All right.
Here's a quick update on some things that some of the elementary schools and the middle schools doing as we kind of wind down the school year here. They're being creative, trying to engage students in the community in events that typically involve large gatherings or we have performances for. As an example, Woodland and Brookside Schools held a joint band recital last week for beginner and advanced band students. They all performed. We had several, in this case, it was probably about a hundred students logged on. The first day of the sixth grade virtual band recital was earlier this week. I was fortunate to be a part of it. I think at some point, we had about a hundred and thirty-nine students logged in through a Google chat. There was so much interest in that event, they planned another one so everyone else, or everyone could have a chance to perform. And that's going to be the second part, it's going to be next week. Brookside, Albigarth, and Woodland School also presented their Art Tag Gallery Show for the 2019-2020 school year. The links, we shared them in the weekly update last week. Those are all events that typically we get a large crowd for. The Art Tag shows are usually held at Woodland School, and you know, hundreds of parents come through, and we get to do gallery walks and see everything. So we're just trying to be really creative to share the work and the products that the students are doing. But knowing we have restrictions as to how many people we can get together and the timelines, it's a moving target, our numbers that we're allowed to bring people together with. But like I said, we're just trying to be as creative as we can to make sure we can highlight accomplishments and get them some credit towards the end of the school year. Some other things, some other things we've done. We have field days at the elementary level that are starting to kick up. Albigarth had one last week, or the week before. It was a virtual field day, had basically a digital choice board. That was really interesting. Students would log in, they'd click on an activity they wanted to do. They'd have some sort of video that kind of spoke to them or demonstrated what they needed to do. And then they could take pictures and videos and upload, load those activities and things they were doing with their family and their siblings to a Google Classroom. And they kind of shared it and celebrated together at a virtual field day. The Woodland Virtual Field Day is coming up this Friday. I think everyone's really excited for that. One thing we have rolling out tomorrow, and this is high school specific, we're going to go live with our senior awards program noon time tomorrow. Check out the district, the high school website. We have our senior awards videos, so congratulations to all of our seniors and all of their accomplishments. And that's going to be an exciting presentation that will kick off, like I said, tomorrow at noon. And then something else we did, and this is kind of a concurrent through the entire remote process, our middle school percussion symphony, that's directed by Yale Snyder, since the last week in March has had weekly guest artists. Each week, they had a different guest in the percussion field come on to Zoom and speak with them and perform for and listen to and critique their percussion. The guests who volunteer to speak and perform have ranged from doctoral percussion students, Broadway percussion performers, percussion composers, college percussion professors from schools, including TCNJ, William Patterson. And all of those guest speakers have been thoroughly impressed with our percussion students. So like I said, we've been trying to really think outside the box and expose our students to and showcase them in a various array of virtual kind of formats.
Thank you, Dr. Lehman. Any questions for Dr. Lehman from the board? Okay, I guess we can move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Alvin, I apologize, Lehman also, the name.
Okay, so Dr. Higgins and the high school team have been working to finalize graduation plans for our class of 2020. The official graduation will be held virtually on June twenty-fourth. The virtual presentation includes all speeches and a tribute to each of our graduates. It will be available on the district website. We will also have students do a graduation parade through the high school parking lot on the twenty-fourth. And the township has proclaimed a soundoff for all graduates at 7:00 PM that evening. More detailed information will be shared with the senior classroom, Dr. Higgins. I think his plan is to send it out tomorrow. Now that the governor has lifted the outside gatherings, we are moving forward with four separate in-person abbreviated ceremonies on the football field for the first week of July. Dr. Higgins, Mr. Piero, and I met with chief BNS and members of the Office of Emergency Management this morning. So we are working very closely with our township to ensure that we are following all guidelines that we need to follow. Board members will be invited to attend one of the graduation ceremonies. If you choose, Dr. Higgins will reach out to you. Each graduating family will be able to invite two family members. All graduates will be seated on the field appropriately, social distance with their family members. And then we'll have a couple of speakers at each ceremony, and then each student will have their name announced, and will have the chance to walk across the stage and a photo opportunity. We know it's not the same as in the past, but we want to recognize each student for their accomplishment. For the rest of the district, we are working on closeout procedures, and they will be shared out by each school. And as we begin to collect the textbooks and return supplies to students, teachers are going to be wrapping up their instruction for the year. And again, more information will be shared with the families this Friday in the weekly update and from the individual schools. I know that there's many questions about what's happening in September. Please know that the administrative team has been discussing various options for reopening schools and all that that entails. We're working through several options that include alternate schedules, certain classes or courses returning in person, continuing remote learning. We're including options for staff and students who are unable or unwilling to return to the buildings. All of these plans are works in progress, and we are still awaiting guidance and orders from the NJ DOE before we finalize any plan. We're expecting some guidance next week. And I will also be including staff members in a district task force to assist with all the planning, and we'll communicate to families when we have more definite plans. But please rest assured that we are working on it and we are aware of it. Now on to the agenda. Although we celebrated all our retirees for this year, I do want to mention a couple of retirees that are on this agenda. As I mentioned in the slideshow, Mr. Reggie Washington. Thank you for twenty-eight years of service to the Monroe Township Schools. We have very big shoes to fill with your retirement. This is Andrea Benevento, Benevento, the secretary at the high school. Thank you for your work with our students and staff. This is Mary Sconiers, custodian at middle school. Thank you for twenty-three years of service to our district. Mrs. Jones Zuland will be retiring as of October first, so she'll be included in next year's presentation. So thank you for your forty-six years of service to the students of Monroe. She will be missed at Barclaybrook and in the district. And Mrs. Rochelle Sworczak, paraprofessional at the middle school. Thank you for your seventeen years of dedication to our students. Her retirement is also effective October first, so again, she will be included in next year's presentation. But I want to wish each of our retirees a very long and healthy retirement. Moving on to personnel agenda, it's recommended that the board approve personnel items A through BG by roll call.
Okay, do we, somebody move that?
Someone, it's Kathy.
Second, Scott Panovich, did you second that?
I moved it.
Okay, who seconded it?
Steve, I seconded it. Andy Palori.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Hey, Steve, Adi. I'm a little concerned about Mary's contract on the attorney that we hired. What was the reason for it? Because I know we got a letter from them, and I'm not going to go into detail with it. But was it the reason because we needed the votes?
The reason was to avoid, to make sure there was no conflict, and basically to keep everything up and above board, we decided to do it, hire an outside attorney to get an opinion.
Did Ken get the same courtesy last month for Mr. Gorski's contract? Because he recused himself.
It was the same issue. And I'm not an attorney, so I can't go into, delve into the legal aspects of it, but I don't think it was the same issue. I think we have to deal with the issue of the question that you're asking and anything else we have to get for our attorney. I don't think it was the same thing. Want to add some light on this, Dr. Alvin?
No, I think there was a question that had come up last month about the contract, and that's why we hired the attorney.
Right, and that's what I said.
Mr. Ryback, at this point, sorry, remind you that this is a personnel agenda item, and the members should be voting yes, no, abstain, or recuse. Those four words should be in. If you want to talk about the attorney contract, that's on my report.
Okay. So let's take a vote now. Are we going to do a roll call vote?
Michelle has her hand up.
Mr. Tofano.
Michelle has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle, you have a question?
She has the mute on, and she's shaking her hand, and obviously you can't see it.
No, I couldn't. Michelle?
You're on mute.
I understand that, I can't find myself.
You're off.
I can hear you.
We can hear you now.
Okay, well, I can't see myself, so I, so don't, okay. So bear with me because I think some of these letters have changed, and I have a couple of questions on some of the things we're voting on. On pay, and I don't know if this has changed, recommended that the board approve certified personnel for Falcons Nest preschool.
Going in and out, Mrs. Arminia.
Okay, well, I don't know why. I know others were going in and out as well.
So Falcons Nest, by the way, is letter P.
Oh, it's still P, okay, great. Letter P, it was on page nine of sixty-one. I just want to know, will these involve students? Will they, will the students be like remotely? Or is this just we're voting on? Because it says July first to August thirtieth.
This is the, this is for the staff to get ready. They have, they're the ones with the preschool at the high school.
Right.
So they work with students, and they also have, basically have a preschool in the high school. This is the summer hours that they get approved for in order to do all of the paperwork for all of those preschools.
Okay, and S, recommended again. I have a question that says, is this a, is part of the normal job description? Or this is an extra pay?
This is an extra pay for the end of the school year and the beginning of the school year because they have so much paperwork that has to be done with, includes the grading, certifying for graduation, scheduling, all of those pieces. So these are the same hours that we give them every summer.
Okay, so and it's over and above their job description?
Yes.
Okay, a couple more. Let's see. On W, recommended that the board approve school counselors for summer work. Also, what is the nature of the work? W?
This is again, summer work. This has, this is at the middle school. So the first one was the high school, was the middle school. And again, it has to do with schooling, making sure that all students have a schedule for the first day of school.
Okay, and the Y, the June twenty-fifth to August thirty-first. Are these summer paraprofessionals? Are these like students, because a lot of times we hire students in the summer?
No, these are our actual paraprofessionals that we hire throughout the year. Use them in the summertime. They come into the schools, they help with getting all of the classrooms, the supplies to all of the classrooms, but, you know, moving all the textbooks, moving all of the student supplies, unpacking all of the orders that come over the summer and making sure that they're in the right place.
Okay, and we need that many this year, you think?
Every year, and yes, it's a very difficult in the summer when we have.
Okay, and let's see. Okay, and the IEP meetings and home instruction? Are these people going to still do home instruction on A, it's A M? Page eighteen of sixty-one.
This is actually staff that's being approved to do home instruction next year. They will only get paid if they actually do the home instruction. This is just our list of home instructors that we have for the following year.
That's fine, thank you for that. And let me just see if there's one more. I think that's it, we are going, what was the last letter? No.
BF, I think?
EG. Okay, thank you very much, I think I'm finished.
Okay, yes.
If you may, I just want to, just retirees and our, and those, you know, those people who have served this district very well for a long time. I don't know many of the people who are retiring, but I do know Mr. Washington and of course, Mr. Matt Perola. You know, they're going to be missed, they've done a great job. And I know they've served us real, you know, very well, and they've served our children very well. And they will be missed. But I want to, I just want to, for a second, just talk about Ms. Mary Sconiers. She's just a wonderful, wonderful person, and my children, they all loved her. My wife loves her. She's, anyone, any of you who have ever had any experiences with her, she just leaves you with feeling. I mean, she's just a wonderful, wonderful person. She glows from the inside out, and she's just a beautiful person. So I just want to wish her well.
You're all, and I certainly, they do. I as well, I know Mr. Washington very well and Mr. Matt Perola, and it's been a pleasure knowing them and just seeing how professional they are in what they do. Thank you. Okay, I think.
Steve, can I, Paul, can I ask one quick question? Just want to follow up on, Dory, if I may, following up on Michelle's line of questioning. All of those summer agreements that we're setting in place for a maximum of hours, is it safe to assume that if life is a little different and we're not ready to reopen in September, they may need less hours to do some of those jobs or not at all?
It's possible, but right now, we're planning for an opening. We just don't know what it's going to look like.
That's good. Anybody else?
Mr. President, I apologize for extending this conversation, but very quickly, I saw the governor's executive order about the camp and the directives that came through that in terms of how to conduct instructional. I'm assuming that the school district is taking those into consideration, right, Dr. Alvin? Just want to confirm that.
I listen to the governor's address every single day.
Awesome, thank you.
I think now we could vote?
Yes, sir.
Gorski, Mr. Board President, this is a, no items. Mr. Tofano. Mr. Tofano.
He said yes, but he
I did not hear Mr. Tofano's response.
I said yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Palori?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Siegel?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Uh, no on AV and yes on everything else.
No on AV.
V.
Mrs. Arminio?
Okay, um, just to be clear, AV is, uh, the contract for, um, our council, our in-house council?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to abstain on that one. And on then A, let's see, AW, I'm going to abstain on two new positions, the BCBA positions. And yes on everything else.
This is Kole Panowicz.
Yes.
I'm, I'm begging pardon, Mr. Board President, personnel items A through BG has passed.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Well, uh, so I want to just congratulate our two newest administrators. Uh, Mr. Randy Flown is the new supervisor of special education beginning July first. And Mrs. Terry Weiss is the new assistant principal at Monrota High School beginning September first. I'm excited that they're both joining our administrative team this year, and I wish them the best.
Thank you.
So on to board action. It is recommended that the board approve the following board action items, A through R by roll call.
Okay, we have, uh, and who seconded?
Second, Jill.
Well, second, okay, uh, any questions? Comments? Mrs. Arminio, I'll show you.
Um, once again, on the bylaw zero, one, four, five, um, I'm not sure if we, um, my last comment last month was that, uh, to say that it was a regular meeting if board members, uh, fail to be in three consecutive meetings. Uh, our attorney has said that it does include committee meetings. And I think Ms. Rupa Siegel said, um, so I don't know what the, what is the clarification? It's still not written.
It's my understanding, it's regular meetings, it's not like committee meetings.
I just want to be clear, and I just want to make sure it's in the minutes. Thank you.
My understanding, okay. Uh, any other questions? Let's, let's, uh, have a vote.
This is Board President, this is Board Action Items, A through R. Mrs. DeMayo? This is Kole Panowicz.
Yes.
Mr. Palori?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Did you hear me, Mike?
Yes.
Hi.
I, I asked for Mr. Tofano.
Oh, sorry.
Beg your pardon, sir, how do you vote?
Yes to all, no on I.
No on I, so noted, thank you. Rutske?
Yes to all.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Uh, yes to all, no on I.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes on all, no on I.
Chiarella?
Yes.
Yes.
Board President, Board Action Items, A through R has passed.
That concludes my report.
Dr. Alvik, we can move now to our business administrators' report. Gorski?
Thank you, Mr. Ryback. If you need the liberty to get off task a little bit with the business report, I would just like to acknowledge all of the retirees. It takes a special dedication to go that long and be able to retire from a school district position. And all of them deserve the very best in retirement. But there's one who certainly stands out, um, and one who I will personally miss maybe more than anybody else that's ever retired. It's a gentleman who started here in March of nineteen ninety-two, has just finished his twenty-eighth year in the district. I had the pleasure of working with him through the Y two K matter where we had in-house, uh, software that, uh, Mr. Washington was involved in the redesign so that we could make it into the year two thousand. Just to give you a little perspective, Mr. Washington brought some of the first computers ever to be installed in this district into our, um, school district. We're talking about software platforms that I worked with, with Mr. Washington, that included Lotus one, two, three, and Quattro Pro. I don't even know if they're in existence anymore. And, uh,
Ryback.
And I, I just want to acknowledge that he's one of the most disciplined, um, people that will always finish a task, and no matter how dirty a job it is, always have a smile and a dedication to the students and the parents of this district that, in my opinion, is unmatched and is an example for all district employees. So, Mr. Washington, I wish you all the best in your retirement. Now, Mr. Board President, it is recommended, uh, that, um, Board Action Items, A through Q, Q be approved by consent roll call.
Okay, um, we have, we have this move, someone move it?
Uh, it's Kathy, I'll move it.
Paul, I'll second it.
Paul.
Paul Rutske seconded, okay, any questions or comments? In that case, we could have a vote.
Hello, it's Michelle Arminio.
Go ahead.
Okay, so some of these items that are, and I just want to be clear that I'm going to write here. Uh, we're talking about some, um, the engineer, Edwards Engineering Group, Samuel Klein and Company, and DIR Architectural, those? Are those the ones we're voting on now?
Yes.
Okay, um, some of these, I, I don't, some of them just looks like invoices and not contracts. So it's hard for me to tell, like, for Ed, for example, Edwards, it's just a, a rate schedule, not a contract. Berkdorf is also just a rate schedule, not a contract. Um, some of the others, like, for instance, facilities management program, that is a contract. Uh, so I'm just wondering why some of these are not contractual, that we can read, uh, you know, what's the, the full extent of our agreements?
Dr. Alvik, you want to, uh, answer that? I think, or I think your mic is off.
Gorski, it's his report.
I'm sorry.
The answer to that is, these are technical implications for next year. And some of them are in a particular engagement. Some of them are just a rate because the, um, the, the engagement that, uh, is forthcoming could vary. And the Board of Education is a rate in the field of specialty that these different people represent. If you have a more, I can answer it, or I could go to your tax payment schedule question that carried over.
Okay, I actually do, um, we have, so what happens when, um, these same people, even though there are professional services people, if their aggregate, in the aggregate, goes over forty-five thousand?
It's a very good question, uh, if you had, give me a little liberty to answer that, uh, there's some the bid threshold for a qualified purchasing agent is on the agenda tonight for approval. The state raised it to forty-four thousand dollars a year. The quote is fifteen percent of that where we're trying to get multiple quotes. Exempt from those bidding and quoting requirements is professional service contracts. These are professional service contracts that we recommended before, they can exceed those amounts. And, uh, and you do not have to go through the public bidding process.
Okay, so just, um, as a, a best practice, I just think that sometimes we should, I don't know, it's, it's somewhat uncomfortable that it seems like an open-ended, um, contract that we don't have to go out to bids on a regular basis for some of these very big items. And I, just for example, um, we talked about the Epic Management Company, um, at a, a previous, um, a previous board meeting. And I was, uh, properly corrected by Mr. Palori that they were a management company and they weren't going to be doing, pretty much manage the design and all that kind of stuff. And they weren't be, they weren't going to be doing construction. And my concern was that, you know, how much would that cost? And then I read in the newspaper that, I think it's Perth Amboy, their design and management company is, is going to probably, now, it's a much higher construction that they're going to go through. But it might be close to four billion dollars. So these are the kind of things that, um, is it conceivable that some of these companies go well over maybe a hundred thousand dollars in a year? The board is not really, um, tasked with getting bids.
Mrs. Arminio? Certainly with your experience, you've seen a lot of these contracts come up before. And we have a transparency process here in the district where we talk about these engagements extensively at the committee level. We generally talk about the fees and divulge those at those times, give cost estimates for each project. Uh, they're included on the bill list each month, uh, for the board to review. And included in that is a sample, uh, that's audited by the finance chair. So those are the checks and balances with those items. Plus, we have a budgeting process where I remind you that, uh, there's no, uh, willy-nilly spending here because it's defined by the appropriations in the budget. And it's limited to that, and there's a lot of discussion that goes on in deliberation with the school district budget. That is a governing financial disclosure instrument that limits, uh, how much can be spent in these areas.
Mr. President, this is Andy Palori, can I have a couple of quick questions, please?
Paul.
Uh, Mike, uh, when we get these, uh, RFPs, are they, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My back, I'm just turning off my video.
Okay. Uh, so Mr. Gorski, uh, in terms of the receiving these proposals, do you, uh, require to put out a, a request for qualifications and proposal? Do you evaluate these proposals based on the, uh, the rates and the qualifications that are provided to you? And is it a general practice in the industry to have this kind of, uh, you know, on-call consultants just in case? If there is an emergency that comes up, you don't need to wait until the next board meeting to go, go through so that the things can be expedited quickly to address an emergency? And this is mostly associated with that kind of work?
Mr. Palori, to answer your questions, uh, it is yes across the board. Yes, to your last part, we, uh, we do get this, it's kind of like a time and material bid where we get board approval for these services in advance in case of an emergency happens and you need them. You don't have to wait till the next month's board meeting in order to contract. Number two, competitive contracting, best practices require that we do get RFQs or RFPs, requests for quotes, requests for proposals for these services. And there is a, uh, analysis that's performed with rates amongst other professionals in the field. And it's, it's quite a cumbersome process that, that involves our facility director, Trey Tig, Mrs. Allen, the accounting, uh, the assistant business administrator, and others to make sure that the public is best served by giving quality services that are needed and that the prices paid are competitive.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gorski.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Steve, it's Paul, can I, uh, ask a quick question? So I'm just looking at GG, the donation of the vehicle from the township. So it's twenty-twelve Chevy Tahoe to be used by district security personnel. I, I'm just kind of wondering, A, that's a nice gift, so thank you to the township. Um, but i- is it, is it a police, be, an old police vehicle? Is that what it is? Or is it just a Chevy Tahoe?
Mr. Ryback? It is a, uh, pre-owned, uh, police vehicle.
Okay, that's what I assumed, but I wanted
It's still in good operational condition according to Mr. Piero, and it will serve our security staff instead of, of budgeting for and buying a vehicle.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, uh, anyone else?
Hey, Steve?
Yes.
Adi? Adi, yes. On the auditor, um, given the concerns of the, the public, uh, I think we need a fresh pair of eyes from a different auditing firm just to show, um, some new transparencies on our, uh, financials. That's on number ten. Um, on number twenty-eight, for the law firm, um, we're only, we're authorizing it today, the contract, but you guys went out and got a letter from them, was it last week, with authorization from the board? Is that, is that correct?
Um, Mr. Gorski, you want to answer that?
Sure. On May eleventh, on May eleventh, Dr. Alvik received an email from a resident two hours before the board meeting, raising a conflict of interest question that had to do with the board attorney. Uh, because of the sensitivity of this and, and a, a care not to violate, uh, the rules, it was pulled from the agenda that evening. Um, and, um, I was directed by the board president to go and solicit a law firm to provide an answer to this particular issue. Yeah, uh, obviously that involves, uh, some professional fees. The, uh, the attorney involved discounted his fee to a hundred ninety-five dollars an hour, and the associate, the, the paraprofessional staff, it's all divulged in the resolution. And not knowing how long this, uh, could take, or if, um, the, a question is satisfied, it's open through the end of the year. That's all I have to say on that.
Isn't it a conflict for some of the board members to vote on this contract?
I'm not going to answer that because I'm not an attorney, um, but, uh, I provided guidance to the board in a confidential email. I would refer to that.
And then on, uh, HH, uh, Schoolology, um, I know this, uh, the platform's K through twelve, but we're only using it for the high school.
Dr. Al, it's Schoolology, right, Dr. Alvik?
Yep, I can answer that one. Yeah, the, the cost, um, is for K to twelve. Our high school did a two-year implementation, so our, all of our high school teachers are using it. We do have staff that are utilizing it out the district. Um, and it will be rolled down into the lower grades, um, as the years progress. But we also utilize it for administrative purposes, um, and, and professional development.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I guess we could vote now, Mr. Gorski? Thank you, we're going to vote on, uh, consent roll call, Board Action Items, A through double Q.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
He's
No on the attorney.
Yes, no on the agenda item for the attorney. Thank you. Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Arminio?
Uh, yes on everything, no on A, ten, and twenty-eight.
I beg your pardon, I hear the note.
No on A, number ten, I think it's A, ten?
A, ten.
A, is it an apple, ten? And A is an apple, twenty-eight.
Beg your pardon, second item was what?
A is an apple, twenty-eight.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes on all except on, on letter NN.
Accusal on NN, thank you. Mrs. Kole Panowicz?
Mrs. Kole Panowicz?
Yes, on every, and I will apologize because I keep losing my internet, and then I have to go turn it off and turn it back on. So I'm doing the best I can with crappy internet.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes to all.
Thanks.
Mr. Palori?
Yes to all.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Uh, no on ten and twenty-eight, uh, the rest is yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes on all.
Board President, Board Action Items, A through double Q has passed. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski, and now we have the president's report, I have a few items. First of my report, uh, I'd just like to congratulate all our students, teachers, administrators, and all staff in general at this point in the year who have been asked to sacrifice so much of what they have always held dear as part of the, uh, our end-of-year experience. We had the death of George Floyd, demonstrations for equality and justice for all, one was here at Thompson Park this past Sunday, COVID-nineteen, all of which were felt around the world. Our superintendent, Dr. Alvik, and her administrative team, as well as school administrators, teachers, staff, and parents have worked hard to provide our students with a positive end-of-year experience. My wife and I adopted two high school seniors, and all of us are enjoying the experience, it's been a lot of fun. I'll go so far as to say all I'll go so far as to say all schools in the district, in other districts, rather, I'm sorry, are trying their best as well because school means community and inherent in that is support and respect for each other. I know we all want things to improve. I wish I could give you an exact answer, but that's impossible right now. We need to be on the same road, working together to reach a better place. Right now, the health and safety of our students and staff are paramount in all our decisions. I hope our leaders will help us in working together to make a better world. I'm ready to work toward that end. I hope you are as well. I have just a brief announcement I saw online today. The 25th Annual Senior Awards Program video presentation will be available on Thursday, June 11th at 12 o'clock on www-monroe.k12 nju.us. Click on MTHS. A brief note here. We just got this actually today via regular mails, but I just wanted to read it. At the assembly, the House Honors and the contributions of teachers in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency and recognizes May 4th through May 8th as a National Teacher Appreciation Week. I realize this is way past the date. We received it today via a regular mail, but I just thought it appropriate for me to read it, considering all the hard work our teachers are doing, and they deserve the recognition. And now, I referred, Mr. Palori, when you gave your report, I referred to a letter that I wrote. And I was hoping to get the board's permission to have this written up and sent to these people. Dear Governor Murphy, Senator Greenstein, Senator Sweeney, Assemblyman Benson, and DeAngelo, For the past several years, Monroe Township School District has not received a fair share of state aid. You're well aware of our overcrowding situation. Our citizens have rejected two referendum and are heavily taxed and refuse to increase their burden. Approximately 86% of the cost of education in Monroe is paid by the taxpayers. We've done and continue to do all we can to meet the challenges of the residential growth that we are experiencing. Cutting $700,000 from our state aid is going to cause more pain. We have postponed the referendum for more school aid. We have postponed hiring for new special ed positions and are canceling trailers to make more classroom space available in the high school. How much more can our taxpayers and staff be asked to do? We realize the pandemic has caused global grief. However, this Board of Education is disappointed in the ongoing neglect of our district's dire situation, as well as this large cut in our state aid. We need a change in the funding formula. The state requires us to pay the full cost for contracted transportation services during school closures. It's also possible for municipalities to defer tax revenues to the school system. I appreciate the fact that ours didn't, but speaking in general now. That would cause a major financial problem. Borrowing to make up the cuts only hurts the taxpayers further. Unfunded mandates still exist. How can we pay for them while our enrollment grows continuously, causing overcrowding and increased expenses? You continue to allow developers to build with no consideration for the school system. It's our hope that you can increase our aid package or provide assistance in some other form so that quality instruction cannot be endangered and taxes not skyrocket. We are requesting a meeting with you to further discuss our unique situation in Monroe. I'd like to make a motion that the board adopt this letter and allow it to be sent out to the people that I addressed at the beginning.
Second, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chiarella.
Heard it.
Any question?
You know, Mr. Mayo brought something up at our committee meeting that I thought was, you know, at first I thought it was kind of funny, but then the more I thought about it, the more I thought that it, I don't know what our, I don't know what we can do or if we can do it or what the legalities are. But you made a pretty good point about these unfunded mandates where we were talking about why we're forced to pay these things and the state mandates that we pay the things. And we pay the bills and we're not using the services. And then maybe we shouldn't be sending the, you know, we shouldn't be sending the money to try and, until they do something for us. So, and I know, I'm not looking for us to do something here with that and to stop paying the state. But I thought, you know, it's an interesting point. And I think it's something that maybe we could research further.
Okay. Steve, I have a point, just to build upon it. I guess the issue is not just not paying some of the services that are not being rendered. But if you look at the corporate world and many of our public, the citizens have lost their jobs because of this pandemic. And, you know, some of the corporations have slashed the salaries of people as well. So, just the fact that we have to pay whatever we owe them contractually in its entirety versus even getting a 10% or 15% reduction that we are seeing across the board in the corporate America doesn't apply to these vendors, to me, is really not a reasonable expectation. I do understand that whether you're a bus driver or anything else, or a police officer, you still need to put on the table. You need to have the job. You need to have them get paid. But get paid the same way that they're getting paid before the pandemic hit and the financial hardship hit in. So, I think that's something that, I don't know if you're going to include that in the letter or we can discuss, should we have the privilege of actually getting a chance to meet with these people?
I think that that should be safe for our discussion if we have the, like you said, the privilege to meet with them. Because there'll probably be some more items that we'll want to bring up anyway. This is just a foot in the door. Look, we've met many times, our legislators and everything, and I haven't seen any appreciable change. I know we're still coming out technically with $300,000 more than we were last year, when I guess some districts were less. But, you know, our situation is very unique here because of the development, really, that the state is not considering the schools because they don't allow for impact fees. And we've been fighting this for years and really haven't gotten anywhere. But I think that it's long overdue that these developers start contributing to the school system that their developments directly impact. It's just logical to me. And for the life of me, I can't see why the state isn't doing that. And anyway, yeah, I'm sorry. Andy, did you want to say something? Was that you? Did anybody want to say something? I thought I heard somebody say something. Go ahead.
Steve, I just want to say that's an excellent letter. I think it reaches everything, every point that we really need to enforce here. And I think it would be a great idea if you got the districts on board with that same letter-writing campaign. I think if the state hears it just from us, it won't have as big of an impact as if they hear it from other districts that are surrounding us as well.
I can certainly propose that, Peter, at the Legislative Committee of New Jersey School Board because you have all the districts there and the state. And I could certainly bring that up.
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry, anyone else?
Mr. Ryback, just a reminder, we need a roll call on this.
Yes, I know. Okay, Mr. Gorski, I think we can vote.
Mrs. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel? Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rutske? Mrs. Arminio? Mrs. Arminio?
I said yes.
I said yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Palori?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole Ponowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback? Board president, please, your motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, thank you, board members, appreciate it. Let's hope we get some positive results with this. Okay, now we can move to other Board of Education business.
I have something.
Mayo, sure.
Um, I just wanted to congratulate to all the retirees. I hope they have a wonderful retirement. I also want to thank the teachers and the staff for all they've done during this pandemic. And I just want to bring up something that we discussed at the end of the curriculum meeting that I didn't touch upon before. We had a discussion of the mental health of our students during this extremely difficult time. And Dr. Lehman outlined how all the staff are working together to help our students. You know, teachers are on the front line and they're reaching out to students if they have concerns. In addition, parents and students are able to reach out to counselors if they need help. So, if you have a child who you're concerned about, feel free to call your school counselor because they are there and they will definitely do the best that they can to help you.
Mrs. D'Amelio, just so everyone knows, not call the school counselor because they're not in school, but email.
Sorry, I stand corrected.
Email.
Mr. Palori?
Mr. President, I see 111 people on the attendance, so I'll try to make this quick. First and foremost, I'm extremely happy to see that our school district is considering having graduation outside. And, you know, I had a conversation with Dr. Alvik. And unfortunately, the social media seemed to think that we already made a negative decision on it. And I hope this kind of wrong propaganda stops very quickly. I did share some information regarding the reopening literature from John Hopkins with our school board. And also, there is a directive in terms of the HVS system. It's not just the things that we touch and feel that result in spreading of the virus, unfortunately. It's also the air that we consume sitting in these buildings. So, something that we should be aware of. I do want to recognize a teacher who wants to be kept anonymous. But she was a person who woke up in the middle of the night after she went through the COVID-19 situation, went and gave her, you know, antibodies to people who are suffering from COVID-19. There's some volunteers within the Indian community who have led this effort. And quite honestly, I heard, Rupa, you probably heard too, what, 69 cases were administered through that and they save lives?
Yes.
Something like that. So, whoever that lady is, she's from Monroe Township School District. And, you know, kudos to her and really hats off for doing such a wonderful job. The one item that I have is something that I've been talking about for quite some time, which is the confidentiality of the information that we discuss in the closed sessions. If you look at the Court of Ethics on the School Board Association, which we all cite every year, there's an item that says that I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the school, which if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff and aspirations of the community of its schools. So, basically, we are all pledging that we will uphold these things. And I know that some of this has been compromised last year. We discussed as a team that we will not be pressing any charges. And we discussed not to have this thing repeated again. Unfortunately, I recently seen some electronic media making circles and making, you know, rounds in the electronic media where a member of the public is clearly indicating some of the actions and discussion items that took place in the closed session. This is absolutely uncalled for. And this is absolutely deplorable that people from our own 10-member board are leaking information from the confidentiality. So, I have no trust to attend our closed sessions and expect that it's going to be kept confidential. So-
Mr. Palori, can I interrupt you? Because it troubles me to hear this. You know, confidentiality of a closed session is extremely important because we talk about students, we talk about personnel. And, you know, that information, until and unless it's legal to do so, has to be held confidential. I have no, I'm sitting here really very, very angry that this, you're reading about somebody in the public saying they have access to this information. It's unconscionable to me that anybody on this Board of Education, we trust, who has the public trust, would leak information concerning, that's privileged information. It's ridiculous that this is, that I have to sit here and listen to this kind of thing. It's absolutely ridiculous.
Steve, it's not just about having the privileged information. It's about, you know, keeping confidential and in confidence with the people who are involved and their security. And quite honestly, if the board members agree, I want to make a motion to have somebody actually do a connected investigation on who the perpetrator is and then, you know, file some ethics charges on the person who's leaking this information from our Board of Education.
I have no problem with that.
I saw the same exact thing, and it was very concerning. It was specifically mentioned closed session information. And I absolutely think we need to have an investigation on this because it's very disheartening that this is happening.
Yes. It's very disheartening.
We all work hard, most of us work hard to keep things confidential, and we abide by those rules. And I really do think we need to have an investigation.
Mrs. D'Amelio, did you second the motion?
I did.
Okay, any more discussion?
Mr. Ryback?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just, what's the-
I'm sorry, Ken, I'm sorry. Mrs. Cole Ponowitz, I think she's frozen in time over here. Maybe we could fix that. I see circles going around.
She got phrases.
She's frozen. Go ahead, Ken.
I'm just, I just want some clarification as to what the issue we're talking about is because I don't think I've seen it. But I want to, I'd like to just know what we're talking about.
I know, I know, Ken, that would upset you as well. Andy, you want to shed some light on that?
Quite honestly, that's again, it's a confidential information. I'll be more than happy to share whatever it is with you, Steve, and then it goes through Mary to get to anybody before, you know, we put it out there. I don't want to implicate any sources on it. So, but however, the bottom line is, if there's somebody among the 10 of us who are leaking information that should not be leaked to the general public, you know, that should not be done. And simply, that's an ethics violation. And we should not be tolerating such individuals who serve on the Board of Education, period, as far as I'm concerned.
You know what, I see, I'm going to, you know, Andy, if you don't mind, I'm just thinking about this, I'd like to amend your motion. I think it's an important motion. But I'd like to amend it that we do an investigation using an outside lawyer so that there's no conflicts or, you know, it's all nice and clean and easy. So, I make a motion that we conduct an investigation at the possible leaks from closed session using an outside attorney.
Yeah, can I turn off? Oh, is somebody speaking?
Go ahead, Kathy, I know you've been out for a while, so come back.
Oh, I saw you couldn't turn.
I'm going in and out, so if I-
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me? Or I'm gone?
Kathy, just to bring you up to speed, we can't probably hear her.
Andy, let me do it. Kathy, can you hear me?
Yes, am I back on?
Andy made a motion-
Right.
-to investigate this problem with the leaking of information. And I amended the motion to have an investigation done by an outside legal counsel.
Well, I'd like, okay, so we would have to vote on the amendment. But I think since we approved, what was it, did we approve tonight? The law firm of Corzio, Bromberg, and Newberg, we might as well use them because we have them on retainer till December.
That's a good idea. All right, I can include-
And they're, we want an outside independent person or law firm to do it because I think that would be, we would have more faith in that maybe than to, you know, do it internally.
So-
She's got a lot on her plate, so-
And I think that's why we now have this other law firm, purposes such as-
You know, Steve, this is Andy. Very quickly, I am concerned about the cost. You know, I know that one person, a member of the public writes an email. All of a sudden, we need to hire an outside counsel to address that. Or, you know, if a member of the public constantly submits Oprah requests, day in, day out, that's taking a bit of time from our own attorney, board attorney, which get paid to do the district work instead of responding only to Oprah's. Oprah is a wonderful thing. I support it. I want people to get information that they deserve to get. But it's becoming almost a game with some public that constantly request that information. Quite honestly, Mr. Gorski, Mr. President, if you allow me to ask Mr. Gorski to come and kind of give us a cost, the order of magnitude cost associated with the amount of responses the school district is being put through, through these Oprah requests and constant filing of various charges.
Mike, you prepared to answer that?
Yes, Mr. Ryback. Just to understand what the board attorney's role is. I am the open public records officer in the district. But as these items touch personnel of the board, certain items have to be redacted. And that's the important process of the legal review. We did this before we had an house counsel, and we're continuing the process now to make sure that we don't violate anybody's confidentiality in sending out Oprah requested information. The attorney's time on some of these issues is extensive. The amount of volume that goes to satisfy these Oprah requests is sometimes goes to a half to a ream of paper that has to be gone through by the attorney, redacted, and then transmitted into media that it can be responded back to the person. To answer your question directly, I would estimate annually, her time charges to be between $30,000 and $40,000 responding to Oprah requests.
Steve, I just want to conclude what I'm saying. I do appreciate all that information. The whole intent is we've been elected by the general public to serve the school district and provide the, you know, a good education to our students. Instead, you know, all these distractions that are created by a handful of people is really not letting us do our job. And, you know, this, Rupa and I, and maybe even Peter, we're coming to half a mark in our term. And that's really frustrates me constantly to go through this kind of stuff where we can't get the board business done because of these distractions. I rest my case.
Michelle, I'll see you here then.
Mr. Ryback, just a reminder, you need a second for this amendment to get on the floor.
You know, I was going to, I was going to add, Michelle, I haven't.
Owen.
I brought up a good idea about, I think, good idea about using a law firm that we're paying for already. So since it's not said, can I, can I just withdraw my amendment and maybe ask Kathy to do the amendment and mention the law firm? Is that doable?
Yes.
That's fine. Maybe since it hasn't been second, Mr. Plori would like to just withdraw his motion and make a new one using the law firm name.
Great idea. Plori, you ready for that?
I'm not ready for that other than to say that whatever the law firm that Kathy is talking about, I do, would like to have them to lead the investigation to keep any kind of, you know, favoritism or partiality and conduct an independent investigation and report back to the board their findings of the perpetrator who leaked information from our closed sessions.
One sec, I know, Ms. Arminio.
We still need a second.
Mr. Gorski, I'd like to second the motion.
We have a second by Rupa Siegel. Now the motion's on the floor.
Okay, one, excuse me, it's Kathy. Do you want the name of the law firm to go into Andy's because he didn't use the law firm?
Just say it, Kathy, if you don't mind.
It's Porzio, Bromberg, and Newman, P.C. It's on our agenda.
Remember all that.
Yeah, we try.
Now, all right, so we have a second. Now we can have questions or comments. Michelle, you had your hand up and then Ken, if you don't mind.
Yes. So I'd like to understand how we found this law firm to begin with.
Ryback?
Yes, go ahead. I can't see you, Mr. Gorski, so thank you for calling out.
Mr. Ryback, you directed me to that last matter.
Yes, I did.
And the district has previous experience with the Porzio firm. I also discussed the issue with our bond counselor, Jackie Shanis from McCarter and English. And it was her recommendation to utilize the services of Porzio, specifically Vito Gagliardi, to answer that legal question that specifically we talked about before. They have expertise in the areas of education and school law. And they came recommended by another attorney that the board has appointed annually.
And just on that, on that note, I was often wondering why we, one, didn't go and get some advice from school boards, which would have been free, and why we didn't go directly to the Ethics Commission or the New Jersey School, you know, the Education Commission. So it seems like this was, I'm a little disappointed at how this has played out. It seems like we are looking for some specific things to happen. And I have been on this board and I have been watching the district for many, many years. And I think there are some people who live in glass houses in this regard. Over the years, I've been very disappointed that confidential things have gotten out. No one has ever been challenged on it. So I'm very disappointed that this seems like somewhat over the top going forward. I am certainly one who has always tried to keep confidentiality and I take this very seriously. My next comment is. No, I'm not, I still have the floor, sir. May I, please? In terms of the Open Public Meetings Act, we talk about the cost of between $30,000 and $40,000. That's taxpayer money. So when a taxpayer looks to the board and the district for information, it is their money they are spending. Open public records is a part of our democracy. And sometimes if democracy is cumbersome and sometimes it's quite costly, it is our government. It's the people's government. If the people need information, I'm very offended that the administration thinks it's a problem that people in our public, in our public sphere, who are paying their taxes, are asking questions. So I really think that the Open Public Meetings Act is to protect the public. And we should not be so offended when people come forward and ask for things, information that they themselves pay for.
Ryback? With regard to Mrs. Arminio's comments, it was not brought up by administration. Administration has no offense in this issue at all. And secondly, your suggestion to go to the Ethics Commission for a private ruling, it's taken about four to six months for a response. This was an issue that had to be resolved by the next board meeting. And New Jersey School Boards Association will always direct you in their guidance to speak with an attorney. They will not provide legal advice like this required.
Thank you. You answered, you made my statement there. I just want to add one thing to, gentlemen, I know Mr. Plori and Mr. Chiarelli, you'll come right after me, Mr. Plori, he had his hand up. There's nothing underhanded going on on this Board of Education. And I'm frankly hurt, you know, that you're saying that, Ms. Arminio.
I did not say anything about.
She keeps, you know, Steve, if she keeps interrupting other people, I gotta go ahead and respond to her acquisitions also. I hope to keep this respectable for everybody, please.
Michelle, you know, you certainly made a statement that, to me, I interpreted that way. And I take offense to that because that's, that's not the way I operate and it's not the way I think this board wants to operate. You know, we're trying to keep things above board and we're expressing how we feel. If you're internalizing it that way, I'm sorry. But there is nothing going on here that you should come to that conclusion. As far as this leaking going on, well, allegedly going on, that's something that every single one of us should be against. And I know, I know, I know you believe strongly in that, I know. And we can't have that on this Board of Education. No Board of Education you can have. It's dangerous to release this kind of information. Ken, I thank you for waiting. I'm sorry. I know you've had your hand up for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Ryback. I just want to, I, you know, I'm not, I don't know what we're talking about as far as what the instance was. But I am in favor of doing this investigation and I hope that the scope is large and that we cast a broad net because I am in possession of information and proof, evidence of multiple leaks that have come out of closed session in multiple directions by a couple people. And I'm hoping that when we do this investigation, that I'm able to sit down with them and show them my evidence and the things that I have because I've been asking for years for these things to be addressed and they haven't. So once that, once we have that, if we're looking to remove people, whether they're employees or board members who are in that closed session and leaking that out, I'm hoping that we're going to take that action because we need to. I agree with you. So I will vote for this and I just hope that I get to have the input that I deserve too as a board member because, as you know, and many people here know, I've brought a lot of things to the attention of the, to our board leadership that have gone unaddressed. So hopefully we'll have a chance now with this openness and transparency to address these.
I want to get this corrected. I have no tolerance for this kind of thing. Mr. Plori?
Very quickly, I completely agree with Ken. One of the things that we take into heart is our ethic, Court of Ethics. And if anybody violates at any time, that needs to be taken seriously. To Ms. Arminio's point about it's a public money, it's a taxpayer's money, they have every right to get it. I 100% agree with it. But unfortunately, there's also, people can take that very sentiment and abuse the power of Oprah. And if I, I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but if you go back and look at the number of people requesting Oprah requests on a fairly regular basis, as soon as a conversation happens between two board members, within 24 hours, a member of the public comes and requests any communication between these two members for the next, whatever, one month of communication between them. And it's constantly the same handful of people doing it. So if it's being done in the good faith to hold this school district and the board responsible, I'm all for it. But I think it's being a privilege that's been overused by only certain privileged people.
Ms. Arminio? Michelle, go ahead. Your mic's off. I can't hear you. Can we, I see her microphone is off.
Is it on now?
Yeah, now you got it.
Okay, it is, sir, it is not a privilege, it's a right of the democracy. It's not a privilege to get open public records. It is the right of citizens.
Steve, can I call the question, please?
No, not yet. The, now you distracted me. So the people who are asking for things, I mean, one of our ethics, if you want to talk about ethics, one of our ethics requirements is that we don't sing people, single people out because we may not agree with them. So that's, you know, that's like a special interest. If we want to single people out who we don't agree with, I think it's, we shouldn't do that.
We have a motion to call the question. We have to vote on that. Mr. Gorski, can we, do we have a second?
Plori, Mr. Ryback, the motion was moved by Mr. Plori, seconded by Rupa Siegel.
I didn't hear that. Okay.
This is to, for the board to conduct a investigation into the breach of confidentiality utilizing the attorney firm of Porzio and Company. Mr. Plori?
Yes.
This is Arminio.
I'm very uncomfortable with the way this is going to be because I believe in.
Yes.
Confidentially, it's yes.
Mrs. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalapunowicz?
Yes.
Ratsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano? Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Board President, motion passes.
Okay, thank you all. Let's hope we get a good outcome out of this. Any other Board of Education business? Anyone?
Yes, Mr. Ryback?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Michelle Arminio, I'd also like to thank retirees and wish them the best in their, in the future. I would also like to thank the teachers and would-be teachers, the parents, who have gone through this shutdown and taken care of each other. And thanks to the IT department, who are those unseen professionals who help the district be seen and heard. So I want to thank the IT department. And I would also, special appreciation for Mr. Washington. He's always been very patient with me in my skills or lack thereof. So I appreciate it. And Mr. Feldman, who was also very, very open lately. So I want to thank everyone and soon to be the end of the school year. So I wish everyone a good summer and hope we can get through this pandemic by September. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Anyone else?
Mr. Ryback, it's Rupa.
Rupa? Kathy, next.
Go ahead, Rupa.
Okay, sorry Kathy, I just want to, you know, thank all the retirees for their years of dedication to our students. I wish them all a happy retirement and best of luck in their next chapter. I also want to just say congratulations to our senior class of 2020. I know, I think about you daily because I also have a graduating senior. And I know this year hasn't been what you were expecting for you, your parents, or anyone. But I do have to say, I want to thank the high school administration, the teachers and the district staff for everything that you've been doing. And it's not only the school district, it's the entire community, working with the parents, the district. We're all collaborating together to make sure that our seniors still have a proper send-off. From the volunteer fire company creating a banner, the rec center displaying signs on the rec center for the students. So I think it's such a nice feeling to know we have a strong community behind our seniors. So I do want to say one more thing because I was looking at my favorite Dr. Seuss book. And as I was reading it, I was thinking about the seniors, so I just wanted to share one page from it because it just meant something to me. It made me think of them. So I'm just going to read this real quick little Dr. Seuss thing because we all grew up with Dr. Seuss. You have brains in your head, you have feet in your shoes, you can steer yourself any direction you choose. You're on your own and you know what you know. And you are the guy who decide where you go. So I wish all the seniors best of luck in your future endeavors. And, you know, just remember you get to be part of Monroe history and continue to make Monroe proud. So best of luck.
Thank you, Ms. Siegel. Mr. Kalapunowicz?
Yeah, this is our June meeting, which I sometimes lose track of what day it is or sometimes even what month it is, but it's our June meeting, which usually equals the end of the school year. So I want to commend all of our teachers and our staff for what they have done the last four months with the online learning and how hard it's been to learn to teach in a different, a different and new way. But also many of our staff have their own children that they've been teaching at home also. So it's been hard for everybody to get used to all of this and staying at home and everything. So I would just like to commend from the administration all the way down that how we have worked through this pandemic. I'd also like to say that I'm very sorry to see Reggie Washington and Scott Madripurla on the retirement list. I've worked with both of them for a long time. Mr. Madripurla was a science teacher for all my children. So we go back a long time and they remember him very well. So I just want to wish them the best and all of our retirees the best as they go through their retirement. You know, we sometimes, we don't ever want them to leave, but we don't have a say in what they want to do in their lives. So we just know that this is their time. We miss them and they both will leave a legacy. Dead again.
Yeah, you go. Why are you frozen there? Okay, Kathy finished? I'm going to assume she is. Any other board member? Okay, can I ask, before we move on to public forum, Ms. Feldman, how many members of the public are waiting? Do you have any idea?
It looks like only two have their hand up. I did have another one, so it looks like three as of now.
All right, I was going to.
Mr. Board President, I just want to update, the question is that there are 117 people actually on. And as you were asked the question, I see the hands go up. More hands go up.
They did, they did now. It looks like there's close to 20 now.
All right, you know what? For the sake of the board, I'm going to make a motion to take a 10-minute recess. I have no idea how long this could take. And then we can have the public forum. Michelle, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I think we should go through the public forum before. It's getting late for them as well. They've hung in there. Can we take the recess after the public forum and before the closed session?
That's fine with me. I just thought it'd be easier. I'm doing it for you, all of you right now. And if anybody has a problem.
I agree with Michelle.
Okay, I'll just move on, move on with the public forum. Let me just state, when you, please state your name and address and you have four minutes at the mic. Mr. Feldman, we have anyone up first?
We do. We have Gazala Bora. Gazala, if you could just lower your hand when you're done. Thank you very much. Gazala?
Yes, hi, good evening. This is Gazala Bora, Juan Mico Drive. Am I audible? Am I audible?
Yeah, I said good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Ryback. I have a few things to say, only one of those I'm looking for a response on. But besides that, everything is just my comments as a taxpayer. I want to start by echoing what Mr. Lehman said about the band concert. I have three children in the music program in the district and I'm a very grateful parent. My fifth grader had a virtual band concert this week and it was simply heartwarming to see the effort the teachers put in, the students. It's just, it was overwhelming and I did send Dr. Alwajin about it. I have a student in the percussion symphony club and I want to really. I have a student in the percussion symphony club and I want to really commend Mr. Schneider for all his efforts for bringing all those guest speakers there. To run a club virtually takes a lot of effort and I know the kind of students he had, well, mine included, there are a handful and he's doing an amazing job. The second thing I wanted to say was I support Mr. Nikotinsky's request in the meeting today about an external audit, like a new auditing company. Because I feel doing that will fulfill the need of transparency this district, you know, has right now. There were so many taxpayers like me who are questioning the transparency and it would only, you know, increase our faith in the administration if we could use a different auditing company to just, for just one audit. The third thing that I had to say, and this is something that I'm looking for a response and it doesn't have to be immediate, but this is something that came off of Mr. Pluri's comment to Mr. Ryback's letter. It just reminded me of something that's happening across, across the corporate world right now, that big corporations are giving rebates on contracts, like contracts that we might be renewing with them, or contracts that we might be signing up new with them. So I just wanted to just throw it out there that when we renew contracts with Rosetta Stone, with Skolagi, the iPad insurance, all of these things, these are big corporations we are dealing with. And maybe, maybe we can have a conversation about how we are, you know, as a district in dire straits and if we could get some sort of a rebate than the usual, you know, your renewal fee. So that is something that I am looking for feedback on. I do want to thank you, Mr. Ryback, on that letter that you read. And I, Godspeed, I hope that does something for us and I hope other districts also join that. And the last thing I want to say is not nice, but I do want to loop back to something that I said in the, in the Board of Ed meeting for the month of May. I had asked, because Mr. Gorski's contract was up for renewal and it was being voted on last month, I had asked about the status of the pending ethic charges. And I was told that it's a personnel matter and that cannot be discussed. I was told that the board members voting on that contract were not informed about the status of those ethic charges. And I was also told that it is not something I can Oprah. Well, so I did not waste taxpayers' dollars of Monroe Township for the Oprah, but the Oprah was done at state level. And I am in receipt of a consent order signed by the Department of Education Commissioner Rapolei and the Attorney of the Monroe Township School District Business Administrator. It is an acknowledgement of guilt of violating three separate ethic codes. The School Ethics Commission, the SEC, strongly admonishes and has concerned.
Michelle, I can, I have to interrupt you. I know, I understand what you said, but it's been our practice not to discuss anything concerning personnel.
I, okay, so I'm going to just go back to something that Mr. Pluri said today, that you guys take ethic violations seriously. I have, as a.
Mr. Ryback, time's up.
Talked about this multiple times. Somebody could have reached out to me personally and given me the answer to this.
Mr. Ryback, time's up. Sorry, the time is up. And I don't feel comfortable talking, this conversation, talking about personnel. And your time is up, we have to move on. Sorry. Mr. Feldman, we have somebody else?
Mr. Board President, we have Sarah Aziz. Sarah, if you could just state your name and address, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sarah Aziz, Three Lancelot Drive. I have two separate questions. We'd like to ask them both first before getting a response to each of them. First, I understand the high school administration led by Dr. Higgins and the superintendent are responsible for planning graduation ceremonies. In addition to this, I wanted to know what role, if any, the board members and the business administrator play in the planning of graduation ceremonies.
You want me to say that or you want?
I'd like, I'd like to continue. I have a few more points, actually. I am a former auditor, CPA, and I was wondering, what's the cost in changing auditors? Because whenever I took on a first, first time client, it required many more hours of service to get to know the client. And, you know, auditors charged by the hours. So I'm interested in how much it would cost the taxpayers to change auditors. I'm also interested in finding out, you know, how many accounting firms do this kind of audit? Because, you know, auditing boards of education is a very specialized form of accounting. So I would like to answer two questions. Additionally, if some people have written on social media that all the existing schools can be extended to alleviate the overcrowding. However, I believe we have a plan for, we have projected 2,700 unhoused students over the next five years. Although I don't believe each classroom should have more than 25 students, let's assume for argument's sake that each modular classroom houses 30 students, dividing 2,700 by 30 would equal approximately 90 modular units. At the last meeting, Dr. Alvik said that we couldn't add modular units onto Mill Lake and Woodland Schools without negatively impacting the surrounding areas because there was not enough space. Can 90 modular units be added to the existing six Monroe schools to alleviate our overcrowding cheaply and safely without negatively impacting the common areas, including the cafeteria and the hallways? Additionally, how do we accommodate 27 projected unhoused students if all future referenda fail? That's it.
Okay, let me, let me start by answering the third one. And Dr. Alvik or Mr. Gorski could chime in after me. Our central administration came up with a recommended plan to solve our overcrowding problem for the next few years. They worked very hard on this and I think you're familiar with what the, what the plan is. Personally, I think it makes sense, but we are putting off the referendum, but it's the, the district administration that came up with a plan that will, will resolve some of these, certainly will resolve the overcrowding issue for, for a few years. Dr. Alvik, do you want to add to that or Mr. Gorski?
I can add to it that, yeah, can we have 2,700 students housed in 90 classrooms? Yes. Will it negatively impact our common areas? Yes. That was one of the reasons that we looked carefully at the different schools to see what would work best for the referendum plan. And that's what was presented at last month's board meeting. With regard to the graduation, it is the high school administration working in conjunction with central office. That's me, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Gorski. Mr. Gorski really just signs the, the bills for the graduation and he is also the person who leads the graduating class into the arena when we have it in person. So, but he's, he's not involved in the entire planning process. That's something that we've worked on as an administrative team. And as I mentioned earlier, we met with the township officials today to make sure that they are in agreement with us that we're following all of the requirements that we need to follow this year.
Mr. Ryback?
Sure, Mr. Gorski.
Regarding the Mrs. Aziz's speaker, about the comments about the auditor, I remind the board and the public that the district went out for a request for proposal for auditing services about a year ago. And this was a publicly advertised request for proposal where we outlined what requirements for the audit were. And we received no responsive bids. So Mrs. Aziz's comments about cost of an initial audit engagement, my experience, and I'm not a school board auditor, is that she is correct. The auditor has to come in and write an audit program, assess risk, and a bunch of other things that are all nuances when you first come in and there is an investment that is created at the beginning and that's, that's obviously billable time. That did not stop this board from going out for an RFP before. And again, these auditors have a license and they are most trained in independence. And they would not be able to issue an audit report or give an opinion on the district's financial statements had they had any impairment of independence in appearance or fact. So, you know, that's, that's the cornerstone of our profession.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that answers all the questions from Mrs. Aziz. Ms. Feldman, we have anyone else?
We do. Mr. Board President, Catherine Hunt. Catherine, please state your name and address. Thank you very much.
Catherine?
Catherine's breaking up, I can't hear her.
I don't know, that's not coming out well. Let's see if this.
We can hear it now.
When you're on now.
Okay, great. For a while, it was beeping or something. Okay, well, thank you so much. I just wanted to tell you.
Just state your name and addresses, Mr. Ryback.
I'm Catherine Hunt. I'm here at 121 Lower Lane in Rossmore.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you very much. Well, it's been very interesting today and I wanted to say I did hear up some, that there were some attacks on Michael Gorski at the last Board of Education meeting. And I was very concerned about that. And I said, so I wanted to look up more information about Mr. Gorski. And he has done such a great job with our budget and he plays a really important role in keeping our taxes lower than comparable towns around in Middlesex County. And I want to say I do appreciate the time he took to answer questions I had on the budget when I contacted him last week. He's also, from what I've been able to see, he's the best qualified business administrator we have in the county and we are lucky to have him. Thank you very much. And I'd like to say he's, he has his master's degree, he has his CPA and public school accountant license, you can look it up. Oh, I had to put this down here, it makes noise. And I noticed that a couple of weeks ago, so many of the schools had cuts and ours did too. And so I wanted to thank him for balancing the budget as well and finding ways to do that. So he, even though the budget was already established, he had to go back and find ways to balance it out. And he did. And also that we do have, there's a very low rate on bonds right now and we need to take out a bond to build another school. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to do that. And I support taking out a school bond, especially at the low rates we have. And I thank you very much. And.
I just, Kath, I just want to say, you know, as far as the budget cuts, Mr. Gorski certainly plays a key role there. So does Dr. Alvik and Dr. Lehman and school principals as well. It's, it's a team effort.
Yes.
We're lucky to have all these people on board.
Thank you. Yeah, it seems to be a good team there. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Feldman?
Board President, we have Kathy Belko.
Okay, welcome Kathy.
Can you hear me?
I can, welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ryback and the board for taking my comments. I have four comments that I'd like to make. My, Katie Belko, Eight Brandon Avenue in Monroe Township. And I have three graduating seniors this year. So I'm very interested in how our graduation ceremonies are going to go. It's been a long time. So I just, I have four points and hopefully I can get through them in my four minutes. The first thing I, this first statement I want to make is I've been attending a lot of the board committee meetings and actually started attending a lot of them when I was at home convulsing with COVID-19. And so I've been listening a lot at the curriculum committee and with all of the things that have been going on, I personally attended the demonstration this past Sunday in Thompson Park. And I want, and I've been listening to all the updates and I wondered if the township has any plans to have a K through 12 diversity and inclusive classes or curriculum that will be added into any of our programs so that we can continue to educate our young people? I think we've probably done a really good job because that demonstration that was put on by our graduated students was very well done and very well respected and did have the support of the local police department. So that's just something I'm throwing out there to the curriculum committee for consideration. The other two things have to do with, one is the public forum. I wonder why we as the public cannot see all of the attendees in the public forum? If we were in the library or in the school building, we would see all of the other people who are in attendance so that we know exactly who we are speaking in front of and what other people are there. And so I wanted to know why that, we cannot see that participation. I personally had to email Mr. Feldman because I can't get the hand to raise. I'm, and I work in IT and I, I went through everything I could do, even going in and out. So I really would like to see that all of the attendees are shown in the meetings. My third point is I would like to, the board to consider based off of the NJSA 10:4-6, Senator Byron M. Byers Open Public Meetings Act, to start enforcing or start utilizing the 10:4-9.1 Electronic Notice of Meeting of Public Body. And that particular section of the act spells out the Open Public Meetings Act for electronic notice of meetings. We, I don't know, when was the last time any one of you read a paper newspaper? I personally haven't picked up the News Tribune or the Cranberry Press in a very long time. Actually, I don't even get it in this part of town. None of the school buildings have been opened, so the public notices placed in school buildings are a waste of time. And also, the clerk's office has been closed, so no one could go to the clerk's office to find out when the meetings were. We, I, I highly recommend that the board create a public Board of Education Monroe Township Facebook page that is official. And you can create those kinds of pages so that comments can only be made by someone from the board who's designated. And that would be a place where people could get the notices of when the meetings are. Also, we should speak with the Monroe Township, the actual township webpage, and perhaps they could put a banner up within the 48-hour requirement that is there, that the meeting, Board of Ed meeting tonight, or Tuesday night, Wednesday night, and then Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. And I would like to ask for permission for another minute. I know my time is up.
You can finish. The time's up. I'm sorry. We're out of time. Mr. Feldman, we have someone else?
We do, Mr. Board President, we have Charlton Thompson. Charlton, if you could just state your name and address. And any attendee that has spoken already, could you please put your hand down? Thank you very much. Charlton?
Charlton Thompson, 44 Struce Meadows Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome Charlton.
All right, you guys have brought up a code of ethics, which is a good transition to one of the topics I'd like to discuss because it's been brought to my attention that one of your board members has been posting on social media using inappropriate language, not becoming of a board member or a citizen of this town. The attitude and temperament go beyond merely disagreeable and really into the realm of antagonistic. Some of the posts that were put up center around bullying, intimidation, sexism, use of profanity, and even a hint of political. Now, we all have the right to free speech, but I don't think a board member that's representing the township students should be making those posts. And I won't say the name unless you want me to.
No, I don't think.
Okay. But I want to know what, what is, you know, what can be done about this?
Well, first, let me say, I, you know, I appreciate you coming up and expressing how you, and your concerns. They're important. But at this time, I'm under advisement to not respond, except to say that I will take this under advisement.
Well, I want to make this a, you know, a formal complaint and I want, you know, a response on what's going to be done, or I am going to have to out this person. So I need to know exactly what, what is going to be done about this. Because if you see these posts, which I have a copy of, they're outrageous, they're disgusting, and this person should be removed. He should not be representing anyone in this township with the vile language that he's been using.
Again, I'm taking, you know, everything you said under advisement, but I cannot respond at this time.
And I'm not, I'm not expecting a response now, but I would like to know exactly what's going to be done, how this is going to be investigated, and how will I be communicating with the result, or I'll have to take it a step further.
I can't comment on that. I understand what you're saying. I appreciate.
It's just going to go into a black hole, is what you're saying? You got to say something, or I'm just going to say something.
As said, I'm taking it under advisement.
But what does that mean? Please elaborate.
I can't, I can't comment on, on anything further than that.
Does anybody else on this board want to comment?
They can't, no. I'm the only one that can respond to you here and my.
So, I need to.
I'm sorry.
So what does that mean, though? You're taking it under advisement? Does that just mean, okay, after this meeting, nothing happens? Like, I need to know something, Stephen.
John, I'm being honest with you, I cannot make any comment further than what I said right now at this time.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to comment, I'm saying, what, what do you mean you're taking it under advisement? That, to me, that could mean a lot of things. You have to give me something here.
I'm hearing what you're saying. I'm hearing what you say, but I can't make any further comment at this time. at this time.
So if we, as a citizen, hear something like this and we bring it to your attention, you say you can't comment?
At this point, I can't comment.
When will you be able to comment, I guess is the question?
I can't say exactly when that would be. I know you're not happy with that, but that's, that's all I could say at this point.
I mean, I, I understand how personnel matters work, but this, I mean, to say nothing? Like.
I'm not saying nothing, I'm saying, I'm taking it under advisement and, but I can't comment and that's as far as I could say. I, I don't mean to do this back and forth with you, but.
I just don't, I mean, from my perspective, I don't know what that means.
My response, but that's the only response I can give you at this time.
Just, you know, as a citizen, it just doesn't seem to be an appropriate response because to me, I mean, you guys do have a code of ethics, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, your time is up, we have to move on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Felman?
Yes, Mr. Board President, we have Prakash Parab. Prakash, if you could just state your name and please drop your hand when you're done, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Prakash Parab, 33 Denner Drive. Steve, the president, I have a few statements, then a few questions. First one is ethic violation, don't just restrict it to the current leakage. Ethic violation, if you are consulting with external lawyer, ethic violation whichever is done and if they are serious, we have to take action, okay? So it should be general, look at all ethic violations which have been done, not particular this one, this particular something looks like fishy to me. So I want it is broad all across, okay? And the second thing is, going to the next thing is, the state is mandating us for, to pay the contractors even they are not working. It is a very, in this situation is a very, you know, emotional issue, you know, because we don't, don't want anyone to lose unemployment at all. But at the same time, the state is getting a federal money. So in this letter, you have to say that which you are sending to governor and this thing, our legislatures must lobby that what fed government is, federal government is giving to our state, some cuts should come to the Monroe Township. They, you know, we never get money back, okay? And state mandates, it is not, so make your letter more stronger and I agree with you, they don't think of impact fees, our special education they are not funding and they are not giving money when the federal sends to the state, they are giving it only few, that is not tolerated, so make this letter stronger. The second, so I want to comment, your comment on that. And secondly, enrollment I'm looking at, again, in last five years, we are enrolled, our enrollment has increased by 441 only and out of 441, 320 in high school. So high school, I don't know because we are getting students from Jamesburg, so it is high, I, I, I'm not objecting to Jamesburg students coming, but the projection that in next five years we have 1,200 students coming is questionable. The thing is, third topic, we had a very good presentation by modular construction company during the BGT meeting. One thing is important, the modular construction means they do off-site construction, whether you want a permanent, high-quality Taj Mahal, single flow construction, they can do it. They construct outside and bring it and, sorry, the timeframe they take is very short, within nine to one year, whereas regular construction takes two to three years. So that is, so my question is, we had a good presentation, so what is the next step? Okay? So those are my, I think I lost the fourth one, I already talked about ethics thing, so that is all and I also thank Washington, Mr. Washington for his implementation of several nice technologies in our schools, thank you. So those were two questions I had, Steve.
Thank you, Prakash. Do we have anyone else there?
Do, Mr. Board President, we have Patty Lang. Patty, could you please state your name and address?
Patty Lang, 74 McFarland Circle, Monroe Township.
Welcome Patty.
Hi. Okay, so we currently have four policies regarding affirmative action on our, in our policy books, affirmative action is required by the federal government and any entity that gets federal funds needs to have an affirmative action program and an affirmative action plan. The key point of our federally mandated affirmative action policy and program is that we will foster a learning environment that is free from all forms of prejudice, discrimination, and harassment based on race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, age, marital status, affectional or sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, religion, disability, associate or socioeconomic status in the policies, programs, and practices of a board of education. How do we as educator students in the board of, and the community successfully foster a learning environment that is free from all forms of prejudice, discrimination, and harassment when a member of the board of education has been accused of behaving in a manner which is completely opposed to this goal? In the past week, we have witnessed a student-led call for action against discrimi-, discrimination and bigotry in all forms. How can members of the board of education, individuals who have sworn to make decisions in the best interest of students, stand by as any student or family of Monroe and Jamesburg feel as if they've been disrespected, devalued, humiliated, or threatened by the words and actions of a board member? I am requesting today for Dr. Lehman, Assistant Superintendent of Schools and the District's Affirmative Action Officer to conduct an affirmative action investigation into the allegations by students, alumni, and the community against Mr. Peter Tofano. Mr. Tofano deserves an investigation in order to refute or confirm the allegations. The results of this investigation need to be shared with the public and if necessary, a corrective action plan needs to be developed and implemented. I am requesting that our school district plan and implement a program that will open a dialogue between those affected by the actions of said board member, those affected by harassment, intimidation, and bullying based on the protective status listed in our affirmative action plan, and those willing to work together to make a change in the status quo. Finally, in addition to the investigation and the open dialogue, I am requesting that the Board President, Mr. Stephen Ryback, work with Dr. Lehman to develop a mandatory training for all board members on the district's affirmative action policies and their implementations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lang, for your comments. Again, I have no comment on this, except to say I will take it all under advisement. Anyone else?
Do, Mr. Board President, Chrissy Scurby.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Chrissy Scurby, 21 Preakness Drive. It's great to finally hear that you guys are taking the moral high road. A good start would be addressing the bad behavior of the majority of this board. The district has had a long time allowing this behavior from our BA, our Board of Ed President, Vice President, and those board members who have supported these individuals. From hate packets to defamatory comments during meetings picked up accidentally by the microphones, inappropriate text messages from district officials on district phones defaming a superintendent, board members, and members of the public, directing security to escort members of the public out of meetings when they speak over their four minutes. Anytime anyone speaks a different viewpoint, they are labeled a naysayer or a keyboard warrior. It is time for this to end. As the Ethics Commission wrote in a response to a derogatory comment made at a board meeting, notwithstanding the commission's decision as set forth within, the commission reminds the parties that the service of the board member should always be above all else, to serve the needs of the students and the children of the district. As a result, there may be times when parents may offer their opinions or viewpoints about the actions and decisions of the board. Even if those opinions and viewpoints are not in line with those of the board, all members of the public should be treated with decency and respect. The administration needs to do what is right and there needs to be consequences for this behavior. This type of behavior needs to end. We need to unite our community and we need to heal from what has taken place way too long in our school district. It is time to right all the wrongs done to so many community members, staff members, administrators, students, and teachers. We've heard from two different members of the public tonight addressing ethics charges that were filed and that were acknowledged, three different codes of ethics were violated by our business administrator. For this board to constantly question what the outcome was and to be told it was a private matter and that it was not operable was absolutely ridiculous and it shows that you take things and you just sweep them under the carpet. We need to do a better job here. What is going on is not right and it is not fair to the taxpayers of Monroe Township. We need to have an investigation and we need to understand what, what consequences are going to be held for violating ethics charges. We have three codes of ethics that were violated. We have a consent order that was opened, signed by the Commissioner of Education with the Department of Education. What is going to take place? I'd like to have an investigation to know what this district is doing because now it's in your court. They signed a consent order with a penalty, now it's on the board of education to decide what to do. And I hope you will take that seriously because this action needs to end. Thank you.
I'm just making a few comments on this. Number one, our board works very hard making decisions and clearly, you see tonight, that we care very much about ethics, but if we make a decision that someone in the public you don't agree with, that doesn't mean we're wrong or unethical. We're trying to do our best, we're volunteers and we do our best, nobody's trying to do anything that's unethical. Our administration is top-notch, they care, I don't know, any problems with our, any of our administrators. And we need to move on from this and from these accusations and I think today we took a step that will help move us forward because the sanctity of a closed session is very important. Okay, Mr. Felman, we have anyone else?
Do, Mr. Board President, Pradeep Malam. Pradeep, please give your name and your address, thank you very much.
Hi, this is Pradeep Malam, 4 Jake Place. So I heard one of the board member has said today in his own word, no ethics violations are intolerable in our district. And I found that our district business administrator has violated three counts of ethics. And while doing that, he, he violated our board policy 1540, Administrator Board of Ethics, exactly on those two counts.
This is a personnel matter and, you know.
This is not a personal matter, okay? It will be a personal matter if he, if he is part of some other domestic violence or some other place, it is a personal matter. I have a docket of 850 pages I skimmed through and this is not a, just like a personal matter. This is the Department of Education, his commissioner has signed and then gave me the report, the whole docket, okay?
Well, I mean, if you think, you can speak to the commissioner on that.
I did, that's why I'm speaking in this board because now ball is in your court and I want to stick to the word that no ethics violations have been tolerated. That's what I want to hear from you. And while doing this, while, while violating these ethics, let me finish, Mr. Ryback.
Yeah, I'm ready, go ahead.
While violating this one, while violating this one, and I went through all the docket pages and it's not just one incident or two incidents, it's a multi-year, multi-year misuse of his position and his office capacity to skim through the people's money for tax returns that it's been filing, okay? And.
Mr. Ryback, we have to stop this. This is, this is a personnel issue.
This is, and that's what I said before, Dr. Alvik, this is a personnel.
This is not a personal issue.
It's a personnel issue because, because he is a, he is in the Personnel Department of our district.
Dr. Alvik, I'm, I'm, thank you, I'm going to stop this conversation, Pradeep, this is not a personnel issue, I want to move on.
This is not a personal issue, this is a.
It is a personnel issue.
We're moving on, if you don't like what I said, you could speak to the commissioner. Right now, I'm not going to listen to that, let's, let's move on.
Mr. Ryback, near the floor. The gentleman's comments are wrong and very misleading and politically driven, I'm not going to comment on it further than that, although I would really like to, I was advised.
I'm sure you would, but I've, I've heard enough of this already, we're going to move on.
Board President, we have Deborah Palella. Deborah, please state your name and your address, thank you very much.
Hi there, this is Deborah Palella, 15 Louise Lane.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, welcome Deborah.
Thank you so much, it looks like I'm the only one who didn't prepare something tonight, write something ahead of time, so I'm just going to go with a few comments and ask for responses afterwards. So my first is, Michelle, thank you very much for saying the public has the right to ask questions, I appreciate that, I probably about 50 texts saying thank you to you for restating that earlier. Regarding part of the agenda, I'm curious if after I'm done speaking, if you could explain to me, I may have missed it, what letter U refers to? What do school physicians do, meaning why are they on monthly retainer? I'm just curious what their duties are. My next question is regarding graduation, if it's split into four days, why are only two people permitted to go in the stands? Are we using both sides of the stadium? Is there not enough room? I'm just trying to understand why only two people from each family can go. And that brings me to my next point, which is, I know we're not saving money right now, but the, maybe the $16,000, I don't know how much they would be, but have we looked into purchasing additional stands for our football fields where we can include more people and have more pep rallies and have more people at our games or an odd example like this for grad? I know we had an issue earlier this year with pep rallies, lots of disappointments and how to fit everybody, just wondering if that's in any budget down the road of adding additional football stands to the field? And I think my last question was regarding, nope, that was it for now, so those are my questions, thank you.
Dr. Alvik, do you want to answer any of those?
Yeah, I can answer them. The question about the school physicians, we're required to have a school physician on, on our, for our district, they actually support our nursing staff, so any medical plans that are created within the district for any of our students are all approved by our physician, also any of our athletes or marching band students who have to have physicals, that is submitted by students' doctors, all of that paperwork actually has to be approved by the, the district physician before the students can participate in any of the activities. So yes, we get all the paperwork from the parents and from your, your child's physician, but it all has to be overseen by our school physicians, but they are, we do work with them all year long throughout the year for all of that. Also, they are the ones that help to guide some of our policies and regulations with regard to administration of medication and they oversee our nurses. Letter, you asked about graduation, even, we have a class size of 590 graduates this year, so even by breaking them, breaking it up into the four different sections and having about 100, 125 students in each, that is still maxing our capacity of our stadium with having each family have two members of their family with them. We are also trying to be very cognizant of where we're placing students, so the families will actually be on the fields, we will have them, you know, socially distant from each other, we, Dr. Higgin has actually mapped out the entire stadium where people can park and with, so that's the reason for that. And with regard to adding more seating in our fields and our stadiums, I can tell you that Mr. Byer proposes that every single year in the budget and unfortunately because due to the high cost and our need for the classroom space, it has not made it into the final budget, but it is definitely something that is in our, that we're aware of and that we know that we need to, to look at, at that, doing that in the future, but it, it goes up against all of those difficult budget decisions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Board President, Lawrence Liu. Lawrence, please state your name and address.
Hi, Lawrence Liu, 58 Brandon Avenue. I want, I was going to thank Michael Gorski, but Catherine earlier did such a great job of that, I think I'm just going to skip right over it. I also want to congratulate the 2020 graduates of Monroe Township High School. I attended the Black Lives Matter rally and I thought that was amazing that a pair, a group of high school students could organize something like that and I think that they're a shining example for what our future holds and this is the generation that's going to take charge in the next 20 years. However, I am very disappointed in a certain board member, Peter Tofano's actions against Ms. Risco. I thought that his, his comments to her were demeaning and I believe that, you know, his, he should be, you know, at the very least, be investigated for ethics charges. I was, you know, I have my little sister who goes to the school system here. And, you know, thinking about someone like Peter Tofano saying stuff that he said to her, it honestly made me really, really angry. So I, I mean, I was reading through some of the stuff and I, you know, I'm actually like shaking with anger because of how upset I am. Because I was, you know, I'm just going to read out some of the stuff because I think it's frankly disgusting. I hope you're okay with swearing, but I, some of the screenshots that are taken were absolutely vile. He said, you know, in one comment, he talked about, you know, fucking someone's wife and then watching his balls slap against their wife.
If you don't mind, I rather not.
I know.
Do have children that could be listening as well. Please know it's a late hour. Maybe you could find some other way of.
I've got it. Okay, all right, very well. Thank you then.
Anyone else, Mr. Feldman? I apologize for that language, folks.
Mr. Board President, we have Teresa Jadwinski. Teresa, please state your name and address.
Teresa?
Okay, I'm going to move on then, Mr. Board President, to Ravi Charavu.
Ravi?
Yes, hi, thanks for taking my call. I have a couple of comments. Number one, I applaud you guys for sending the letter to the state. However, I do have my doubts because as you mentioned, Mr. President, last time that you guys have been fighting for this for a long time and the politics is unbelievable. And I have reached out to Senator Greenstein and asked her to come to Monroe and explain being on the board, why she couldn't fight for us more. And thanks to lucky stars, the COVID came in and she didn't have to come in. So my suggestion to you is this, I would ask you to do whatever that you guys need to do at the state level, but also ask Mrs. Greenstein to come to the, this board meeting next time. Because they already agreed to come to Monroe and ask her how she's going to fight. Because just sending the letters, it might just go into oblivion. Because a lot of people are going to be sending letters and they will, they will see the letters and they'll say, okay, fine, let's move on, right? So I'm not sure how effective just sending a letter is going to be. So that's my suggestion. My second comment is going to be again referring to this member of the board. I have the messages and all I can say is his comments are so filthy that they're filthier than the worst sewer that you can ever find on the planet. It is unbelievable that my kids are going to the school where he's on the board. And it is appalling that he's on the board. And it questions the type of decisions and comments and the, and the, and the decision that he can make for the board. I question his character and if he has any iota of decency, he would resign right away, knowing that his comments are out in the public and in the press, right? And secondly, in line with Mrs. Arminio's comments that the public have the right to know, and I hear you, that you cannot comment on, and you can't say anything about this, this person and the course of action. I think the public has the right to know what the procedure is for just generally if there are such violations coming from a board of, a member of the board. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your concern in coming up to speak. Anyone else?
Mr. Board President Sheila de Alessandro. Sheila, please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sheila de Alessandro.
Welcome, Chiro. Am I pronouncing it correctly, Chiro?
Sheila.
Sheila, oh, okay.
That's okay. I first wanted to say thank you to the board. I think that Monroe has got one of the best school systems by far. But we have our own little things, just like, you know, every other place, but it will work itself out in time. One thing as a parent is a little concerning, listening to everything that's going on here. Listen, no one's perfect. Everyone has their flaws. Everyone gets a little hot under the collar and they kind of think about what they did after it came out. So I get that whole thing. I'm sitting here listening to Mr. Tofano catch a beating. And then you have, you know, Mr. Gorski, where, you know, we, again, we have to respect both of our members, but I don't think we should allow it to happen to Mr. Tofano and not have it, you know, kind of silence it with Mr. Gorski. I think they, both gentlemen deserve the same respect in that sense. And everyone in my eyes are innocent, they're proven guilty. So I think that the bashing is just like not a good thing for our children to see. The other thing I have to say is I do not know Mr. Tofano personally. I know of him through the community. And I have bantered with and back and forth on social media. And again, we agree to disagree. I have been, again, as a resident, through somebody else had found out attacks on his children, his family. It has gone on to hours in the night and everything. And then I can say as a parent, I would lose my cool too. Listen, everyone's entitled to a mistake. We say things and, you know, he has a position on the Board of Education. He's not, not perfect. But again, we have to respect everyone's boundaries. So if we want our children to grow up in a beautiful world, we need to teach them a beautiful world. So I think going back and forth, you know, to everyone out there, everyone deserves a fair share. Just like you watch out for our children being the, you know, the board heads. And we'll have your back once, you know, once you have our back in that sense. But I just, I just had to call in because I've seen so much nonsense on social media today. And all I'm thinking is he has children at home. And I'm thinking about all these police officers that are going through this, you know, at home and their children are worried about them. The world is so ugly, why do we need to make it any uglier? So, you know, my thing is, we're known as Monroe and to me, Monroe is great. It's beautiful. Let's keep it that way and let's just work together.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your thoughts and for speaking up. Feldman, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Board President, we have Leon Singh. Leon, pronounce your name and your address. And sorry if I did not pronounce that correctly.
Leon?
Can you hear me?
Yes, is it Leon? Your name?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, just need your name and address.
Leon Singh, 34 Imperial Court.
Welcome, Leon.
Thank you. I'm a 26-year resident of Monroe. I have four children that have gone through and are still currently going through the system to have graduated. I have also volunteered countless years of my life here to the sports program in this town. I'm calling due to the recent events with Peter Tofano on social media. I have to tell you quickly our history. It is ironic that Peter is being called a racist since racism is what brought us together through social media. About five years ago, there was a racial incident on social media where one demographic in town was ostracizing another. And I can tell you, Peter was outraged, and so was I, that this was appalling and going on in Monroe. This is how our families have gotten to know each other over the last few years. We have been very, spent a lot of time together on the sports field, socially and many other things. I can tell you that he is not a racist. I have never heard anything come out of his mouth that would even implicate anything like that. When we found out that Peter was going to run for the BOE, there was no doubt that many others were going to support him for the change that we want to see on the Board of Ed panel. And as you can tell from the number of people who voted for him, a lot of him support him in this town. This does not come from being a racist. This comes from people actually knowing the real Peter Tofano and the care and the fairness that he wants for the best for our children in town. He is a family man, a businessman, and that does not allow a lot of time in your life, extra things. But he was so deeply committed to wanting to change our children's future that he gave up family time to serve on the BOE. He is also the type of man who I see, who offers his services or anything he can do to help people, such as offering a GoFundMe account for a dying man in town to have a fishing boat so that he could fish his last days of living. I'm disgusted to see what is going on, on the attack of his character, which by the way, most of these things said was before he was elected. His children have now been attacked and that should outrage all of us. It is clear that there is an agenda going on here in town and that certain residents in our community have a personal problem with Mr. Tofano and it is truly disturbing. I also do not condone a lot of things that Peter says. And we have conversations about this. And Peter will listen and acknowledge and a lot of the times say, you know what? I could, maybe could have done that differently. I expect in dealing with Peter, that you all remember we are all imperfect. There are two sides, probably three sides to every story and screenshots are only showing one side of this. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts and just for coming, coming here today. Anyone else, Mr. Feldman?
Yes, Board, Mr. Board President, we have Saladin Maxut.
Saladin, welcome.
I am trying to unmute as we speak. Okay, unmuted.
How are you? Thank you. I'm not sure how my name got on the list. I actually did not request to speak.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I will mute you, okay?
Okay.
All right, we still do have, we do still have a couple of people. We have Pritball Singh.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Very interesting evening.
I need you to state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Pritball Singh, 9 Louise Lane, Monroe.
Thank you.
Very interesting conversation. And thank you, Michelle, for standing up for the public. You know, that's really appreciable. I'll be very quick, you know, I've been seeing, like, you're talking about personal matters should not be discussed till we are discussing it. On one side, for Mr. Gorski is personal, for Peter Tofano is not personal. So I mean, so keep it consistent. We as a public just need to make sure, you know, you are not biased towards some people who's setting the part and be transparent on what's going on with the Board of Education. Now, I heard Andy also for some investigation, I don't know. But do you have extra funds to do all these things, but those funds cannot be used for the education of the kids? Either person matters.
I'm going to just answer that one. You know, if we have possible leak of confidentiality, that's protect the kids and protect, and protect personnel. And we need to find the funds if we had to, to do this because we can't in any way jeopardize the sanctity of a closed session information.
Okay, and thank you very much for answering. But what I, I am not, I don't, do not know personally Peter. But what I have seen is these posts were before he got elected. I suppose after that, I, he must have, he must have learned something out tonight. So I hope he will not be doing that, but, you know, thank you for answering.
Okay. Thank you for your thoughts. Anyone else?
We do, we have, it's the initials RD. RD, can you please address the board with your name and your address?
Hi, my name is Javel Davis, 42 Spruce Meadows Drive.
Welcome.
Thank you. I know that you spoke on Mr. Tofano, that you can't say anything per se as to what on NJ.com, on the petition with 2,500 plus signatures in 48 hours. I'm deeply disturbed by what I saw and what I read. I have children coming through, one that graduated and some of this coming through the school system. And it's very unnerving to see that you have a, a member on the board that, the language that, that was used, you know, towards, you know, children and people in general, it's totally unacceptable. So being in fact, I heard people, you know, and you couldn't say anything. I would challenge the board right now to rebuke the behavior in front of everyone right now.
Well, the, the only one that can answer you right now is me. And the, the only answer I could give you is the one that I've been giving is that I have no comment on this right now, but we're taking everything that's being set under advisement.
So advisement is just like that, that's nothing. Advisement can go into a folder and a desk tomorrow.
Well, that, look, you said that, not me. I didn't say that.
You personally rebuke that type of behavior. If you read that, say it's not Mr. Tofano, let's just make it person X.
I want to tell you something. Get into being cross-examined here. I'll stand by my own ethics and my own reputation. Anything else, I just have no comment on and that's all I'm going to say. So I'd like to move on right now. All right, Mr. Feldman, we have anyone else?
We do, Mr. Board President, we have M. Wiener. Can you please address the board with your name and your address? Thank you.
Yes, Michael Weiner, 9 Sequoia Court.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Listen, you know, the board needs to do the right thing and Peter Tofano needs to resign. It's shocking to hear people call and support him and some of these reasons that I've heard is just nonsense, okay? Our eighth and ninth graders probably take computer literacy classes and know enough about a digital footprint to be careful about what you put online. And our board members are going to go and treat community members that way? You got to be kidding me. This is an embarrassment. You guys need to do the right thing. And I also want to say that there's other board members who are on these pages and know, see this behavior. And they were aware of it for months and months and no one said a word. And you know what that is? That's cowardly. That's what that is. It took community members to address this behavior when all of you, many of you, were aware of it the entire time. And that's absolutely cowardly. So do the right thing now. Do the right thing now and remove this guy from the Board of Ed because there's no other solution to this embarrassment. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Anyone else?
Board President, we have Michael Alessi. Michael, please state your name and your address. Thank you.
My name is Michael Alessi, Mayberry Avenue, of course, Monroe Township.
Welcome, Michael.
Thank you, Steve. Steve, just want to make maybe a positive comment after listening to all the comments by all the people in the public. At some point in time, I remember I was doing some reading on the New Jersey Board's website. And I remember reading, I'm pretty sure it was there, that they apparently offer some type of a communications workshop or team building workshop. And maybe not, right now is not the right time. But I wonder if you could maybe make a note to revisit this, maybe in a few months, maybe when things settle down. And, you know, it'd be really nice too, of course, if this workshop were one that not only included the board, but also the public as well. So that somehow, some way we can get back to somewhat friendly relationship between the board and the people here in town. You know, I think that would be a real good step in the right direction. And I'll give a little shout out to Lou Masters while I'm at it because I remember him talking about this when he was running for the board. That's it, Steve.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. Feldman, anyone else?
Mr. Board President, as I see now, there is no one else from the public.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Feldman. In that case, I will close the public forum and we're ready for a closed session. I just want to make a, a motion before we go into closed session. I make a motion for the Board of Education to appoint Kathy Kalaponowicz as temporary Board Secretary for the discussion concerning superintendent's evaluation in closed session this evening in accordance with NJSA 18A:16-1.1. Okay. Mr. Chiarelli seconds it. Any discussion?
Yes, Steve, this is Andy Plory. I, I think this is where we're also lacking some transparency. We keep hearing the members of the public actually getting to the, into the closed session. So I request that no telephone use, cellphone use is permitted during this closed session, please.
I'm going to reiterate that as we, when we get into closed session, Andy, just what I wanted to do. Okay.
Mr. Ryback?
Yeah, Michelle.
Okay, can you read the entire resolution, please, so we, we can.
I'll read it again, I'll read it again. I make a motion for the Board of Education to appoint Kathy Kalaponowicz as temporary Board Secretary for the discussion concerning superintendent's evaluation in closed. superintendent's evaluation in closed session this evening in accordance with NJSA 18A:
Okay, that wasn't the one I meant. I meant the closed session resolution.
I didn't get to that yet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay. Not a problem. Okay, so we have discussion on this. I guess we could just do a vote on this. I don't think we need a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, no abstentions or recusals. All right, so this motion passed. Now, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21. We discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, and bullying; matters falling under the attorney-client privilege; proposed settlement agreement and release in confidential student matter 83636; MTEA Level 3 grievance; discussion regarding MTEA negotiations; superintendent's evaluation; employment contract. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Okay, I guess we had somebody, if I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayo, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, just, just can we take a break? And also, can you tell people how long we might be in that session?
Absolutely.
Where are we going to go from here?
Yeah.
We're going to, there's a link, Kathy, for the closed session.
There was a Zoom link sent out.
A Zoom link sent out. It should be in your calendars.
Right.
Not in the calendars. It means.
Sorry.
A ten-minute break be acceptable?
Hold on, Steve, Steve, one second. Let's just make sure that we all have the address for the Zoom, because I did not see it in my email. So.
I didn't either.
Did you look, is it in?
In your calendar.
Mr. Feldman, is it in the calendar or email?
It's in the calendar. I sent it. Dr. Alvin sent it. Let me look at it. I will send it again to the board members.
Check your board email, because that's where I got it. And then you had to accept it, which would put it in your calendar.
That's what might have happened.
Okay, I can.
I just sent it again.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are we taking ten minutes?
Michelle, I couldn't hear you.
Are we taking 10 minutes? So will that be 10:45?
We're just finishing with this one. I think you're having a problem with the technology there. Yeah, let's take, I make a motion, take a 10-minute recess. Forty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, we'll be back a quarter to, whoa, quarter to 11.
Steve, we leave this on, right? We leave this meeting on? Or we get out and get back in?
Go into closed session.
Yeah, we have to get out of this, right?
Close that, hit the X.
The X, leave event.
Got it.
Steve, no. Hold on. I don't think we have all the members here. I see Peter Tufano missing, and there's one more person.
Paul.
Paul.
Paul, Peter.
I think Paul fell off his chair.
Late, 20.
What do you think?
Steve?
Yes.
Would you send me a copy of the motion so that I?
The Board of Education hereby approve the previously submitted settlement agreement and release in connection with confidential student matter 83636. The Board President and the Business Administrator Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action by the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Moved it, and who's second? Jill?
Jill.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
No, 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 it'll be a roll call.
A roll call, well, I'm sorry, Kathy, go ahead.
So, wait, I got to go to my beginning and get the paper. Okay, so we'll do it this way. Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
And I am going to vote yes also.
Me.
Oh, all right, you should go last. So, Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Okay, so it's unanimous.
Okay, so that motion passes.
Motion passed.
Okay, the next scheduled Board of Education meeting is July 22nd.
Ryback, just a point of order. You still have to see if there's anybody in the public who wants to speak on the resolutions.
Is anyone, anyone in the public there?
I think there are still 37 participants from what I'm seeing here.
She means well. That's, Michelle, you're correct. Okay, July 22nd will be the next Board of Education meeting. I'm assuming it will be virtual. Make a motion right now to adjourn. Do I have a second? Chiarella, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm not, not seeing anybody. The motion passes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.